Let's be quiet. Good, good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for January 11, 2021. For the 2:00 PM session, no public testimony is permitted during this review session. The first item is item number 18, Continued Hearing on the Special Order Calendar, 4297 BZ, 9320 Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. Um, sorry. A request was made to Walgreens Corporate Engineering Department. This is about the lighting.
Yeah.
Were the light overflow problem. And it included what I thought were extremely helpful photos. Normally, we don't ask for photos of this. There's supposed to be meter readings, but the photos speak as it's usually said, the thousand words. The photos show exactly how bad the overflow is. The engine, it's a photograph of all the lights at the subject site off and, sorry, on at night. And it shows the, the huge impact of this very large fixture on the neighbor. The engineers recommended only changing the fixtures on the pole and, and on the wall and adding shields. But I have to say, it's very hard to believe that such a thing will work since the poles, the pole is 30 feet high, as indicated on the drawings, which is at least as tall, if not exactly the same height as the house. So I'm trying to imagine how, what is, what kind of shield that would be that restricts the overflow onto the property, past the property line from a height of 30 feet. In any event, they're supposed to be doing the work soon. So according to the submission, so we can see how well that works and get the data. But I'm not optimistic and it seems like it's expensive to change the lights and not just lower the pole height or move the pole. So the photometric data sheet provided doesn't indicate where on the lot the measurements are projected. It's actually, I found it very difficult to understand the drawing relative to the site, but it appears to show Lumen spread. And this is a projection, I believe, after the corrections are made. So it appears to show Lumen spread far in excess of 0.0 of the property line. So I don't understand how they came up with their proposal. Maybe they don't understand what our goal is. Our goal, our direction is 0.0 at the property line, not just low numbers at the property line. So I, I think that the engineers may not understand that that's the mandate. And so also allowing them to finish their photometric analysis and do the installation should also be enough time for them to remove or relocate the red box that impedes ADA access on the ramp and to show us a photo of it removed. I actually don't understand why it wasn't just removed because we've been talking about it for a long time. And instead of submitting a drawing showing it removed, they should have just taken it away or moved it someplace, whatever. And to answer the question, they also need to answer the question we actually posed. And so they, as opposed to not answering it, which is, is the illuminated sign greater than 50 square feet? That was the question posed. The question was not posed whether it was the same size as before. The question is, is it legal? So the drawings don't indicate which signs are illuminated. And the measurement of the Walgreens sign may or may not be the way you measure an illuminated sign. I, I don't know in terms of what DOB standards are. And I think we mentioned that also at the last hearing. And those are my comments.
You saw the January 8th they sent you, right?
I don't know.
The photometric? The letter with the photometric? Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's what I'm talking about, the photometric.
Okay.
There's another photometric, right?
All right, okay.
Yeah. So there's a photometric that shows the two light poles or I don't know what the little squares are, but anyway, there's two squares and it shows over the property line, if I've got that right, 2.3, 3.6, 3.5 on the adjoining property. That's not okay. It needs to be zero. So I think the engineers are kind of assuming that as long as it's low, it's okay. No, it has to be zero on a residential property line. Okay. So then Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with you with the Lumen analysis. I, I think the applicant didn't fully understand what we were expecting. These counts are significantly high when we see, I mean, we, we nickel and dime over even 0.5 to get to zero. And here we are talking about sevens and twos and fours. So there are some ways to go on that. With regards to the, with regards to the red box, I don't know. Did you see the plan drawing 101, oh, oh, that was submitted as part of the December 29th? I think so.
So the applicant submitted photos after the, attached with the drawings.
Oh, I, maybe I didn't see the.
Yeah. So in that was, so this, this is like a three-part machine. And so the applicant has removed one of the parts which enables, which provides the clearance. And the photo has been provided indicating if you go to, I think it page 10 of 11.
Sorry, we're on the December 29 submission?
That's right.
Okay.
If you go to page 10 of 11.
Okay, let me get there. And, hey, oh, okay. Oh, I see. You know what? I don't think I saw those photos.
Yeah, I think it wasn't quite clear. We, we always expect these to be just drawings. So, but the cover letter mentioned it.
Okay.
So I'm okay with it.
Okay, so they took it away and they show six feet to the, I don't know, to the flag or something.
Right.
Yeah. And they show some distance between four feet between the edge and a column.
Right.
Yeah. So that's enough, I guess, to squeeze. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So apart from the Lumen, I was satisfied with the rest of the submission. The, the signage, I didn't understand the question you had. Can you, can you repeat it again?
So this is something that was discussed at length by Commissioner Otley Brown. The, the calculations for the signage appeared to exceed 50 square feet for illuminated signs. And the instruction at the last hearing, and if there was one before, it was the one before also, was the signs have to be illuminated less than 50 square feet? And the response was to say, not to worry, it's the same sign as was up before. And then we get a letter from the owner saying to my recommendation, it's the same sign. That's not what we asked. The sign has to be legal, right? So in terms of, but when I look at how the sign was measured, where they take the top of the W, which is taller than the letters, and they take the line and they go straight across, that's the measurement they're giving. And I don't actually know whether DOB insists on that way of measuring, like from the top of the tallest letter across, or whether you go from, you take the top of the tallest letter and then you drop down to the next lower letters and then you could measure, in which case it might drop the area down. I, I don't know the answer. Signage applicants are the ones who know how DOB measures and maybe they, yeah.
So maybe one of the conditions that we can put that DOB has to approve the signage, illuminated signage and non-illuminated signage to C1 regulations and all signage must comply with, for DOB-approved plans or something to that effect, maybe.
Well, so that's, we always talk about this. Do the signs comply with the C1 regulations? So right now, we don't know whether they comply.
Right.
Didn't get the information, right?
Right.
So maybe they comply. I don't know. All we got was, that's what there was before.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. So let's, Commissioner Otley Brown, jump in on that.
Yeah, I agree that telling us that this is how it was since the initial grant doesn't really help us in determining whether or not it complies. It's almost irrelevant. So what they need to do is show their measurements for how they're measuring these signs. And then let's see if it's under the 50 square footage of, of illuminated signage.
Right.
You know, and I agree with you about the lighting analysis. And I think it's good that they're going to hear from us now before the lighting staff come to the site on January 18th to take, to change the way the lights are and reduce the amount of lumens and all of that, because it may mean that they have to get rid of that southernmost light fixture, the one that's on the border and may install, maybe install some lighting in the fence on that side, which would provide light for the site, but not be up and over the fence backing into the residence. So before they spend the money, we got them, we caught them.
Yeah.
And that's all. No other comment.
Thank you. Just a question for Tony. I only see the December 29th Lumen diagram. Was there a later one? Is there a difference?
No, they would say, a, the photometric, I don't think they've submitted.
There, there was a photometric submitted in the December 29 submission.
But then the January 8th, they sent you something that they upgraded it and it was 0.5 to 1.452, I think it was. I sent it to you on Friday.
Okay. It's not in, it's not in.
He, Madam Chair, yeah. An email was sent at 5:24 PM, which shows the existing photometric and proposed site photometric. And it really does not show much of a difference. It still is not zero.
Yeah, the, the engineer guy is going to be at the meeting today, the hearing today.
Yeah.
There's, there's a 1229 and a 1231 that's in our folder. Okay, I'll, I'll take a look for the.
Right. The, the one from January 8th, the counts are from, on the residential site, while it's less than what was submitted in, on 28, it still is not zero there. It's, it's reading 1.4, 0.7, 1.3.
So, okay, okay. So, yeah. So in other words, what we're reading was existing and that's the proposed. That's what I'm confused. So I, I see one that I took from the December 29th, I guess, which was 1.4, 1.7, 2.1, 2.3, 2.8, 1.6, 3.5 over the property line. So it, and it wasn't clear whether that data was projected or whether that data was existing. I understood it was projected, what I was reading. I don't know whether what you're reading is projected and the, yeah. So I guess we need to, them to clarify these two photometric analyses. Are they both projections or is one existing and one projection?
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. But with this application, actually, I started to believe that I'm a time traveler because I, I recall that we had this exact conversations with the applicant, with the applicant back in June. And I recall that I told them that, forget it, you're not going to be able to shield unless you take this light fixture down. It's very tough, almost impossible to get to zero Lumen spread at the property line. I'm talking about the southern one.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not sure why we're getting this submission. And what is existing and what is proposed? I was anticipating one submission that's existing slash proposed, this is the final work done, period. And with zero luminous spread at the property line, but I'm not sure what is that? And, and there are like some terminology in the tables on both the plans. I'm, I'm not sure what is that? That, that, that average, the maximum, the illuminus? I don't know. Why it's that complicated?
Yeah.
It, it should be very straightforward. And initially, they submitted, actually, the Lumen diagram they submitted was illegible, the one that was submitted before December 31st. That was like almost not legible. And, and, and then came the two nicer plans with the aerial image in the background. Then I thought we're done, but apparently we're back to square one again. So I, I don't know.
Yeah. I, I do have to say that I, I recognize this from my own experience working in sort of these super corporate, complicated structures where you saw the local management has to put in a request to engineering management that's located in some faraway land kind of thing. And, you know, and then those engineers aren't necessarily given the same information as local management had. So there, you could see the request for work, right? The request for work merely says, we're getting complaints about the lighting levels on the neighbor. You guys need to do something. The instruction is not, we're getting complaints and the instructions are that you have to have 00 Lumen spread across the property line, proceed accordingly, right? And so I could see if all the communications are through these requisitions for work, this is going to take a long time. So I'm hoping that in this hearing, they can have the engineers who submitted that Lumen diagram or the proposal participate in the hearing. So you're not playing this game of terrible phone tag using string.
The applicant mentioned it before. I recall that. He mentioned that they hired somebody who knows about lighting and they are working on taking some of these poles down, making them shorter. You know, I, I'll go check the video, but that's what I recall.
Yes.
But it's not done, this submission. I don't know why.
Right. Yeah, okay. I'm just looking at my notes too. Okay. And Commissioner Shabeta?
Thank you, Chair. I, we've been, they've had three appearances, one, and I guess two are Germans. One was its first appearance. You know, if, I don't understand why they'd want to go down the road of this, this type of engineering plan with regard to lumens. If they take a must, I, I, I think I'm echoing everything that the board said, they should take a much more aggressive, aggressive approach now and perhaps put an end to these hearings.
Yes. Yeah.
It's just going to cost them more money to keep doing this.
Yes, agreed. So they're going to, right, they're going to end up buying those light fixtures, which probably are in the couple thousand dollars of fixture. And they're going to find out that putting a shield on them doesn't work. And then now they own those fixtures and they're going to have to cut, they're going to have to remove the pole. I mean, it seems pretty obvious, as Commissioner Otley Brown mentioned, that the right solution is to mount lights to the fence or on a little pole that's fence height. And then it's obviously blocked by the fence. And then you're done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that the applicant hears this and acts accordingly. So we don't have to go back and forth on whether or not this plan will work, only for them to redo it after.
Right. Okay.
Okay, next item is item number 19, 24503 BZ, 16011, Willets Point Boulevard, Queens.
Sorry, just one second. Okay. Okay. At the last hearing in August, I reiterated the question about how the proposed drive-through could be permitted on the portion of the lot that is in an R district. Upon further research, we learned that though in artfully written, the board apparently granted a special permit to move the commercial district boundary line over by the maximum of 25 feet, but that left a remaining portion in the R district that could not be covered by that special permit because the special permit's limited to 25 feet. And that left a remaining portion in the R district and there is no special permit available to extend the lot line all the way over to encompass the entirety of the site. So the only way to actually put this entire site into a C district is via zoning variance, I mean, a zoning map change. The applicant subsequently, as a result, realized its error and has revised the application, sadly. Sadly, in the sense that we've been at this for so long, I wish they would have looked at this earlier. Revised the application to return to what had previously been approved, more or less. As you may remember, the drive-through had been a problem for the community board since cars were backing up into the street waiting to get online. It seems to me if management really wants this drive-through, it needs to come up with a management plan to prevent the type of piling up of cars in the street that is so typical at this location. And all of the site visits, street view imagery shows cars piled up like that and double parking and, or not double parking, sort of all packed into that driveway and also lined up in the street. One, one idea that I had, though, others may respond to this, but I'm sort of actually remembering scenes in the Flintstones where they go to drive-ins and the Brontosaurus burgers are delivered right to the windows. And I actually can see the little, the woman's waitress who was delivering the Brontosaurus burgers to the windows. One idea is to have people call in or text their orders in advance and then they park in the lot and then they either, they walk to the window or like in the Flintstones, it gets delivered to their car. Or by adding, adding an order in kiosk in the parking area so that people maybe walk to the kiosk and then they can go to the window and pick up their order. Something to alleviate the, this pileup and that there would be even staff, for example, who would be announcing to people who are waiting and can't get onto the drive-in lane, the drive-through lane, that they pull in and use this alternate method of ordering. What we see in images of the current drive-through, which is effectively the proposed drive-through, is just a slightly different shape, is that they use, the cars use both the drive-through and the pass-by lane that is in the R district to jam themselves into the drive-through. So they'll go into the pass-by lane and then cut in, in front of somebody who is waiting either already in the drive-through or they're about to enter the drive-through and they're waiting on the sidewalk. So there's a lot of sort of aggressive jockeying, it looks like, to get into the drive-through lane. And that's part of the problem. And also, the fact is, the pass-by lane is in the R district, so it can't be used for the drive-through lane because that's not a permitted use in the R district. So the proposal that we see is to use the existing curb cut to access both lanes, which will just replicate the problem. So I think the only way to solve this is to have two separate curb cuts that are clearly for each purpose. So a curb cut that's clearly for the drive-through and a curb cut clearly for the pass-by lane with bollards that prevent the cars that are in the pass-by lane from cutting into the drive-through. And then again, with needing staff members to direct those who are waiting in the street to drive into the pass-by lane and park. If you'll remember, this application was initially rejected for not being suitable at the site. So as being too much on a small lot. Or perhaps the problem is the drive-through is in the wrong place or it's the wrong design or I'm not sure. I mean, maybe there's other ways of doing a drive-through, but you have the problem of being on a corner lot with a very busy roadway and that maybe can't handle cars pulling off of that roadway into the drive-through. So, so, you know, I, I really don't know how to respond to the community board's concerns without management coming up with a better solution than just doing it the way they've always done it at all of their McDonald's throughout the country, most of which, of course, are suburban. So, and then I just want to say that after all of this trouble and discovery about this issue with the district boundary line, I'm really surprised to see that the drawings are not pointing out clearly where the district boundary line is. That the boundary line was relocated pursuant to a special permit, special permit number or whatever it is, 73 something, I forget, with the calendar number so that it's clear on the drawings, how in the world that pass by, that drive-through exists at all because it's sitting in an R district? But the fact is, there had been the relocation of the district boundary line. I mean, I'm just surprised that that doesn't show up on the drawings. And, and I'm surprised that I have to point this out after all of this time. So I would like to hear then from Vice Chair Shonda.
I, yeah, I too was, it was unhappy to see the, going back to what we started with and a lot of time was wasted and I feel bad for the applicant. But they need to fix it. That's all I have to say, with all the comments that we have provided. And if I seem to remember, in the plan, they do have an area marked off for pickup. Now, I don't know if that is for pickup, for placing the, it's along the, I, I think the entrance is from the, the other street. And there are a couple of lanes dedicated for parking space dedicated for pickup. Maybe they should increase the number of spaces dedicated for pickup so that, that can be accommodated.
So I have a question. As you know, I'm not a regular. I've only been once in the last many years to experience this. Is this pickup window, that's the, it's a very last spot on the drive-through before you pull into Lewis Boulevard?
Yeah.
So is that only for cars to pick up? Or?
Yeah.
People go there? So where would people go? Inside? Okay. You can unmute yourself, Commissioner Otley Brown, and jump right in on that.
Oh, because I'm nodding. Yeah, the pickup window is only for cars going through the drive-through and walkers walk in in order at the counter. Or they, some of them now have inside like internet kind of screens where you could order when you're inside and then walk up to the counter and just pick up your item. I've never heard of them placing them outside. I wonder if they're weatherproof.
Why not?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, why not? So, right, we have, we have Wi-Fi on the city streets, right? You know, with like a whole kiosk and things like that on the city streets. Why not? But I have a question also about that. So if I'm a pedestrian coming from the car, right? I parked in the lot. How do I get to inside the building without crossing these drive-throughs? I'm walking between cars. Is it, does, is there something like prevents me from getting hit by an aggressive, really hungry?
I, I think you would probably walk across the, the parking lot. That's probably what you would do. I mean, I doubt anybody's going to walk all the way out to the sidewalk and then walk through the sidewalk. Usually, fast food, the whole key of fast food is speed and convenience. So you're not really going to get that much buy-in for people taking longer to get in and get out, so to speak. So I doubt people are going to go out of their way to walk to the sidewalk if they could just dart across a parking lot.
Right. So it's more than the parking lot, they're darting a pass through the drive-through while cars are, are like allgating each other to be next online.
Right. But I have to tell you, most of these McDonald's are exactly that.
Okay.
There's that you have to get to the building and if your parking is on the other side of the drive-through lane, people are darting across a drive-through lane with the idea that the average person going through a drive-through lane is only going two miles an hour.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, I, I don't know if Vice Chair Shonda finished.
No, I don't have any additional comments.
Then Commissioner Ollie Brown, do you want to go on?
I just want to say it was unfortunate to find out that information. At the last minute about the split district. But I kind of am really sympathetic to them because they've been at this for over. Let me see, over a year, almost two years now, actually. It's about to be two years. And so I, I would look for the most expedient, cheapest solution for them being that they are an institution here in this site. And they seem to have so much of the community behind them.
Okay, so to that point, expedient solution might be management coming up with a plan. That responds to the community board's concerns. It seems that you could handle this with staff and management that it doesn't always have to be physical. Because you control who orders, what they get, how they get it. You're in charge of that. You could have like little runners with. Round bags, it seems to me. Might be a nice concept. You might be opening up a whole new. It's like the new drive in movie theaters.
They do have and some other McDonald's have that as well. And I believe I heard them say they have that too, where they have these. Pullover parking spaces where if you're ordering something that's. A little complicated or large, like somebody's offering, ordering for their office, they have you pull into a particular spot. And a runner will run your bags out to you in an effort to get you off of the line. So the line can keep moving as smoothly as possible. So maybe they could elaborate on that and kind of do some kind of a hybrid with what you suggest. Like people order outside. And maybe go into a particular parking space and people run it out to them, maybe during lunch hour. It doesn't have to be all the time because they don't always have that line backing out. It's really a lunchtime line.
Yeah, lunchtime and, and breakfast also?
I don't even know if it's breakfast. I just, I, my experience is it's definitely lunchtime. I have stopped by there a couple of times at lunchtime. So I, I don't know about breakfast though.
Right, okay, all right. No, but I agree. It's probably only a couple of hours a day where they would need to institute this. The rest of the time it's probably flowing.
Right.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta. You're muted, Commissioner Sheta, you're muted.
I, I just realized, thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, I, I agree with what's been said. I believe we, we, we need to like consider. That they were before us for a long time, but in the meantime. They need to help themselves. So I'm, I'm willing to like. Listen to them and see what kind of solution they're gonna put on the table.
Okay. And Commissioner Shiveta.
Thank you, Chair. I, I appreciate that they've been between us, before us for a long time. Although I don't, I'm not prepared to discount yet the, the community board. I, I hope that management can come with. Can, can arrive at some sort of middle ground to achieve the community board's concerns.
You know what I wanted people to respond to is my recommendation for the two. Curb cuts to very clearly separate the drive through. I know that there's a. Like a push on the applicant's side to have this just one large continuous driveway and or a curb cut. And I'm, I'm seeing that that's part of the problem. And so that's why I, I really are, am recommending that there be two curb cuts with. Like some standard distance between them. Because right now the curb cut isn't centered on either driveways. So it's kind of off. So it requires that you drive up and then you kind of veer onto the sidewalk to get to the path that you want. It should be directly online with, that's my opinion, is directly online with the destination lane. So if anybody has comments on that or we can wait until we hear from the applicant. Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hands to speak on that. So we can move on to the next. Tony, you're muted.
I know, I just so realized that. Item number 207204BZ14154 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Another one where there was a request to adjourn, which I denied because the application has been at the agency for over a year. And there has been only one previous hearing with the others adjourned. And there are many problems with the site and I believe we asked the owner to attend the hearing. And going forward, the owner must attend every hearing on this application. Again, one where we could deny the application for failure either, either to prosecute or failure to comply with the. The agency's or the board's directions. Okay. Move on? Yeah, unless anyone wants to add anything because we're going to wait to hear what's going on. We haven't heard anything about the site. Since the first hearing in. May and it was submitted in October 2019. So it's been here at this agency for a year and two months. Okay.
Okay, item number 212308BZ80-14 Chevy Chase Street, Queens.
Okay. Just a second, I'm scrolling just a minute. Okay. As we all know, this is a very problematic application. There are now 45 open ECB violations. And 22 DOB violations with approximately $65,000 in penalties owed. A receipt for payment of $6,000 for a 2016 ECB violation. Was provided to us, but I actually don't understand the significance of it since the balance, including that payment, remained $65,000. The, the July 2020 survey shows the site extending six feet past the property line. And we asked for proof that this is a legal condition and we got nothing. We had also asked for drawings that clarify the relationship between the seller at the lot lines. And a survey to show that the building has not extended into city property. I don't believe we got the. The, maybe we did get that survey. We got a section to show that the cellar. Extends to the property lines except that the sort of what would be viewed as the rear. We said no to potted plants in lieu of plants and planters. And we even gave direction about how to handle the alternatives to in-ground planting. To be clear, potted plants are not plantings as described in the memorandum of law submitted here. We even described how to install above-ground planting beds were located above the cellar and they refused to do that. Above-ground planting beds are the standard. Vinroy, you're. Okay, because, because something is crackling. Okay. We even described how to install above-ground planting beds when they're located above the cellar, which is done typically above. Garages, sellers of all type all over the city. They're above-ground beds. And again. If they hire a landscape architect, they would know how to detail that and not just simply refuse to do what we direct. We also said no many, many, many times to the walk-in refrigerator. We directed that the gas lines be removed. And I have to say that though the applicant didn't help us out with that. Our counsel was, learned that a permit was obtained to do that, the removal of gas lines on November 25th of 2020. But we didn't hear anything from the applicant about the status of that work and the permit now expired. Already it's expired last week. So they obtained a permit. It doesn't sound like they actually did the work. I don't understand that. And the gas lines have to be removed. Instead of complying with our repeated directions. We receive a memorandum of law that insists that this board lacks the authority to direct the owner of a house of worship building. Built and operated illegally to return the form and operations to the status quo. To be clear, this board has not said that the building cannot operate as a house of worship. Which is the essence of the court decisions that are cited in that brief, that memorandum of law. This board's efforts are focused on removing the nuisance complained of by many neighborhood residents. That of the illegal catering establishment. And of enforcing the board's standard to ensure that the adjacent residents, residences are sufficiently buffered from the noise and crowds. Generated by the house of worship. I don't think it is too much to expect to balance the needs of the institution with the needs of the community. The memorandum conflates allowing the use of the site at all. With allowing the changes made to the building without BSA or DOB approval. The applicant suggests that a conditional approval restricting the use on the site is the solution to the historical problems. Such conditions work when the applicant has demonstrated good faith in the past and abided with board direction and conditions. That is not the case here where both direction and conditions were flouted. I have no faith at all based on the applicant's conduct during these hearings that such conditions will be honored. Especially given their refusal to remove the walk-in refrigerator. That formed the basis for their commercial operation in the past. And retention of the gas lines to the kitchen equipment and outstanding ECB violations. Not to mention their illegal overbuild as to building height and significant site intrusion. Into the public way with a brick wall. This is the fifth hearing and exactly one year since we started to review this application. To legalize work done in defiance of the board's 2008 grant. I frankly don't know what to do anymore, other than to deny this application to legalize the existing conditions. In that case, they can take up their illegal site conditions with the Department of Buildings Enforcement Agency. Enforcement Department and we could be, we could be done with that. So my recommendation at this point. Is to close the hearing and, and, and set a date to deny the application. Giving enough time on between the closing and the vote. For the applicant to reconsider its aggressive pushback with the board. And to actually do what they've been instructed to do and refuse to do to date. So those, that's my position on this. We've been at this. Too long and we can't just keep going on and on and on indefinitely. Vice Chair Shonda.
I too am disappointed to get almost no response to all the issues that we have been, we have raised. And I do agree with you that. Above-ground planting is possible, though it's not desirable, but it is possible if done correctly. And in this case, if that works without causing any further damage to the cellar roof. They should pursue it. And. I, I'm, I am disappointed.
Thank you. Commissioner Ollie Brown.
I agree with you, Chair. It is taking absolutely too long for them to take steps to actually bring themselves into compliance. And I'm very frustrated, as are you. No other comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I, I believe we're in the neighborhood of time buying game here. This, this application is, is, I recall during the last hearing, they, they assured us that. The gas line is going to be removed soon. Actually, that was like two hearings ago. And, and this is the first time for me, I, I know that the coordination of the work. Takes more time than doing the work. This gas line, they submitted this application for the permit and they got the permit a long time ago and still. The gas line is still there. The walk-in refrigerator, we had discussions about this during the last hearing. And here we go, this hearing, they are coming back saying that it's not economically feasible for them to remove. And they are claiming that we ask people to provide refrigerated trash storage. That's correct. But we don't ask people to provide walk-in refrigerators to use them for trash storage. This is number one. And we do not ask for that when this imply an illegal or encourage an illegal use. So our concern here was clear. We believe that the continuation of these. Walk-in refrigerators are gonna like encourage them to provide catering. And, and that's why we asked them to remove him and they said we'll do. And now they are coming back and saying, no, we cannot. On the other hand, regarding the planting, this is the first time I hear that. Planting could cause leaks in cellars or damage to a cellar roof. I, I don't know how is that. But if, if they have an engineer who's willing to explain it to us, please submit it in writing. So it's gonna be a good. Learning session for me. But I'm, I'm, I understand where you're coming from. If you want to close this and vote, I'm very supportive.
Okay, thanks. And if, just to, just to put a little color on that idea of an engineer explaining how planters leak. Above-ground planters leak, according to that, there would be no public parks. In most of New York City, those vest pocket parks are all built on the rooftops of, of garages. And other kinds of cellar occupancies. So according to that, we'd see not one of those in all of New York City. And that would be a surprise.
So they are not even talking about that planting is leaking. They are talking about damage to the cellar roof. I don't know how is that. I, I can't, I can't believe it. There is something called waterproofing. There is something called drainage. They need to read about that or maybe hire somebody who knows how to do it the right way.
Right. And by the way, it rains right there on top.
Exactly, yes. Yes.
I don't know.
Maybe, maybe it doesn't there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shiveta.
Thank you, Chair. I remain unconvinced by the applicant's legal argument. Pretty much limits the board's power. We, the board's made a reasonable request. That were agreed to and we've been back, we've been doing this circular thing back and forth for a couple of hearings now. I think that it's, I think they've exhausted their opportunities. And also I have a hard time, even if today they say they're going to make all those changes, they've said this in the past. I have a hard time. Having faith that it won't just be, as Commissioner Sheta said, a, a game of delay. So I agree with the chair and would be glad to vote the same.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hey Chair, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say something additional. If this was not a, an application for a house of worship. I don't believe, I, I personally, I wouldn't be that patient. The only reason that we took all the negotiations and discussions and the lack of like. Prosecution for this application is because this is. An application for a house of worship. Now, I believe the only way to push the applicant. To either move forward or face the congregants. Tell them that I failed to get this done.
Okay, thank you. I think that's true. We were, we have been very patient. And we, well, we were, let's say, forceful at the very beginning. But gave them time to respond each time they didn't respond. And now it's been more than a year, plenty of time. Let's move on. Okay, thank you. Next one, Tom.
Item number 2225-09BZ277 Canal Street, Manhattan.
I think the board's requests were responded to except no bubbled plan set. Should be accepted without a list of changes key to the bubbles as required in the administrative notice. So please never, just read out and out. Project managers reject the bubbled plan sets when they don't come accompanied by a list of proposed changes. You don't have to ask nothing, just look, is there a list? Rejected. I do see that our project manager, i.e. Tony, had to reach out after the submission deadline to obtain many of the items that were requested at the last hearing, and I don't understand why that was necessary. The applicant has the responsibility of listening to the hearing and review session, which is videotaped, recorded. So there's no excuse that you didn't catch it or you weren't writing your notes fast enough. It's recorded, you can listen again. Many of us listened to these recordings again to check what it was that we talked about at the last hearing. So I don't understand that. The roof terrace does not appear, though, to be part of the active PCE. It is accessed through the men's locker room and seems to be from mechanical and maintenance based on photos. So I don't think we have to be concerned with the use.
That's why I asked for the extra photos to see where the, logistically where that was placed.
Yeah, no, those were very helpful because it shows, it's a pretty nasty roof, by the way, you know, looking in a back alley, and it has mechanical ductwork and other stuff in there. So, okay. Vice Chair Shanda.
Yeah, I have to say it was a little confusing with all the documents. There's one correction that the applicant should make, which is sheet A-2 is labeled as proposed third floor when it is actually the second floor plan. Otherwise, I had no additional comments. And I'm assuming the applicant is withdrawing the request to go to LPC because there was a prior banner there as part of the historic report, though I do not know what the height of that, length of that banner was when it was granted, and I don't know if that is relevant, so.
Right, but they showed us the photo that the banners had been removed.
Uh huh, right.
The signs we see now are inside the windows. I don't think LPC reviews.
But I think the latest submission does count the banners into the signage.
Ah, so.
So that's why I'm a little confused. And as part of that, they submitted the LPC's historic report, which said that the banner was, and the banner is mentioned in the historic report analysis. So does that mean they do not need to go to LPC? And the length of the banner therefore does not matter how many banners? I don't know, I mean, the report didn't get into that detail, so.
Right, no matter what, they always have to go to LPC, even if it's definitive of no effect or, you know. So probably best because we cannot grant anything that requires LPC approval until we have LPC approval. And as we saw with Franklin Street, for whatever reason, that approval took six months. So I would recommend to the applicant that if they want to add banners, they do that in a subsequent filing, where that may be something that we could do by letter because as long as it complies with code, with zoning and with LPC. I think, does that sound right? I see your, or maybe the drawing. I was thinking, I'm seeing your face looking like you want to add something, so maybe.
No, I'm trying to find my notes. So I'm scrolling with my fingers, so I was leaning in.
Okay, so I'm just looking at, I'm seeing my old notes. It says they'll provide a sign analysis and check the banners have been permitted by LPC. So either there's already a permit for the banners, in which case we don't have to think about it because it's the existing user. So.
Right.
But I'm a little bit confused because roof terrace. I thought on this one, we asked to see that the signs were removed from the exterior.
The banners.
I think, didn't we?
Yeah, they said they are removing the banners until they get the approval.
Right, okay, so then the... Sure. Yeah, well, okay, so this is something to discuss because either they have an approval already, in which case we don't need to do anything and we can close this, or could vote on this, right? Or if they're waiting to get an approval and the banners show on our drawings, then that could delay this, right? That's their choice. Or they could take the banners off the drawings that we have, so, and then apply LPC and however long it takes, it takes. So that's something.
So if you go to drawing A202 that was submitted on January 7th, it shows the banners on third floor.
Okay. So that, so it shows the banners on the third floor of our drawings, right?
Yes, A202 submitted on January 7th.
Okay, so.
And it is included in the signage schedule.
Right, okay. So then the problem is until we have sign off from LPC on those banners, either they have existing sign off or they have to apply for it, one way or the other. Yeah, one way or the other, until we have approval, we can't vote on it. We can close it, but we can't vote. Okay. All right. Oh. Now, I was going to say, is everybody okay with the continuous use proof? All right.
I was okay with it, but I would like to hear Commissioner Hartley Brown to weigh in on it.
I was okay with it because if you do go on Google, there is a June 2019 photo of UFC gym.
Okay.
So I figure, okay, so then that brings them at least till June 2019, and then it's what, it's like a year and a half now, but it was less than a year probably when they submitted their paperwork for their continuation.
And so because otherwise it was just Con Ed bills they submitted, right? Yeah. Okay. They did an affidavit by the council, but we rejected that, so. Okay. So anyway, I hadn't gone around the room. Commissioner Hartley Brown, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I know they stated that the third floor was not, the outside space was not being used by the PCE, and they submitted photos that looked like just an empty rooftop, so I was fine.
Okay.
No other issues.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I have no, any other comments on this. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Sheta.
Nothing further from me, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Next item is new case, item number 23, 5-98BZ, 1861 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, sorry, the little wheel is going around and around on my computer. The mouse is hungry. Yeah, exactly. All right, here, it stopped going around and around. All right, so this one. This case was postponed from the November 9th hearing for failure to provide timely notice. We now have proof of service of initial application to officials and a notice of hearing to officials and neighbors. Community Board recommends approval. This is arguably a very straightforward application, but as we look to see whether the perimeter and onsite conditions are suitable for the R district in which the site sits, we need onsite photographs taken both along the perimeter, looking at the fencing conditions, and also looking into the site at the condition of the building and the quality of the essentially open storage, right? I didn't find a copy of the BSA approved drawings in the file, so we need that. I'm a little surprised it got this far without those drawings unless somebody else found them. I only found the proposed drawings as opposed to the approved drawings. A compliance chart was submitted on January 8th of this new year, but it would be more useful to go through the terms of the prior grants in the statement of facts. For example, what are the hours and days of operation? Because that was a list, right? That was in the conditions. Are the perimeter fences eight feet high? That was a condition. Is there a 10-foot planted area along the lot line that's shared with the residences? And when I say planted, not storage of nursery materials, but actually planted to be growing to maturity and more. I didn't see on the drawings that there is this 10-foot specific planted area, and we need photos to show that. Do the signs comply with the C1 district regulations as required in the conditions? If so, show the signs and the signage calculations. At the 2009 hearing, the board directed that landscaping materials be removed from a vacant lot that's located at 1873 McDonald Avenue. Based on satellite imagery, it doesn't look like this was done. So I note that that, I note that that location is just on the, in the residence district, just on the border of the commercial overlay, which is unfortunate, but nonetheless the case. That's a vacant lot that is being obviously used as an extension of this use and is not permitted without a variance. It also, or a change in the zoning map. It also looks like the subject business extends beyond its property line into the street and uses the street for display and storage, none of which is permitted, except that under recent, and of course now it's winter, so you're not getting the same kind of display, under recent changes to, based on the COVID retail difficulties, the mayor issued an executive order that allows for retail to extend onto the sidewalk. This would be the time to take advantage of it, but I don't know if that will be a permanent condition the way sidewalk cafes are going to become permanent conditions. We still also need fire department. So, yes. So Commissioner, Vice Chair Shanda.
Thank you. First of all, the location of the site is incorrectly shown on the zoning map. The, most of my comments is regarding the compliance, and I think they overlap with yours. I think what was confusing in the compliance map, compliance chart, I'm sorry, is that there's a column where the NA terminology was used. So I wasn't sure whether, it was confusing. I mean, is it, it begs the question, why is it not applicable? Is it, does it mean that it's already in place and it's complying? Or that it's not in place and there's been a change in zoning? So it was very confusing. I agree with you that they need to provide the photos, and especially the 1981 BSA grant specified that a 10-foot landscape area be required along the rear lot line. And I don't think the plans show that. The plans that's been submitted does not show those details or specifics. So we do need the details of those treatments along the lot line and per our new standards in terms of the planting requirement. The plan refers to a barbed wire fencing that needs to be removed. And I don't know if there are any outdoor lighting, at least I did not see any light poles, but are there any lighting attached to the building? And so if so, is it costing, what is a lumen analysis? Especially along the, yes, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Just so you know, the barbed wire was a condition of a previous grant.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
Yeah. And both a condition, and when asked about the barbed wire in a prior grant, the owner explained that it's really necessary. I sort of get why climb over and then grab the plants because it's all open storage, right?
Okay, that's fine. Then I take that, my comment back. But with regards to the lighting, I don't think we have a lumen study. Nope, we don't. And the hours of operation has that, if that has changed.
Right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
My only question had to do with the hours of operation as well.
Okay. And Commissioner Sheta?
Same thing here, and I just wonder, the statement of facts, when I looked at it, it's like very brief, it doesn't have like too many details. So you have to dig into the different documents of the application. So hopefully next time when somebody submits something like that, we alert them. So we avoid these kind of like very short statement of facts.
Right, so this is not an experienced applicant, but I do, yeah, I do want to alert our project managers, some of whom are not that familiar with, let's say, haven't been at this for so long. But in any event, these kind of really short statements don't force us to build the statement ourselves. So instead, the project manager should be sending a set of questions to the property owner, asking the questions. So at the very least, the sort of statement of facts letter becomes affect, its response becomes effectively the statement of facts when we don't have someone who's used to this idea of writing a, like a, you know, a memorandum of law kind of thing about the, about the statement. Okay.
Or maybe just email them an example for a statement of fact, so we can take a look at it.
Right, right, right. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I only had the question about the hours. Hopefully the applicant can respond, and if he appears again, provide a better statement of fact moving forward.
Okay. Okay, ready?
Yep.
Okay, this concludes the public review session. We'll now commence with the public hearing. Okay, we are now in the public hearing for January 11th, 2021, 2:00 PM session. The Zoom webinar ID number is 978-669-3388. The first case, continued hearing, item number 18, 4297BZ, 93-20 Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Marvin Mitsner for the applicant. With me today is also Drew Simon from Walgreens, as well as Eric Ryberg from EMC Lighting. The critical issue that I heard.
Mr. Mitsner, Mr. Mitsner. Hi, I have to sway you in.
I don't swear.
Okay.
Got you.
I deserved it. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member question?
Yes, I do.
A gentleman, the other gentleman?
Are they on?
Yes, this is Eric Ryberg, I do.
Mr. Drew? Drew? I guess he's not listening.
I don't know that he'll be testifying, so.
Oh, okay.
So as I was saying, we heard in the exec session the concern that the board has about the lighting. And as you know, we have Eric Ryberg, who can address that issue and indicate what he's done and what he intends to do. So Eric, if you want to just chime in?
Yes, good afternoon. I also listened in earlier today and heard the concerns. I agree with you, I think it was a little bit of a phone tag, came a phone tag issue with what the actual requirements were versus the constraints that the site has regarding the lighting at the property line. The documents that you received Friday that show the photometric with the Google Earth image as a background were really meant to illustrate what the existing issue is and then the proposed solution. What was, what we found is that when this was initially installed, the wrong fixtures were installed on the pole. These fixtures have internal optics that guide the light to where you want the light to go in the parking lot. Unfortunately, this pole was supposed to have a right optic and a left optic to shield the light and push it away from the home to the parking lot. Instead of a left and a right, both. Instead of a left and a right, both lefts were installed. And so you have one of these fixtures directing all of its light back to that property, that neighboring property, instead of into the parking lot. And that's where the trespass is coming from. The solution that was originally developed was to go back, lower the lumen output of those fixtures and then put the proper fixtures on. So all of that light is then cast to the parking lot versus the neighboring residence. I agree, the, if we need to get to zero foot candles at the property line, like I heard earlier today, the solution won't get us there. And we will need to look at a different solution. And that will require probably different fixture solution, as well as maybe a different mounting on the pole with the pole height, noting that that pole is 30 feet. So I guess that's, that's where we are today. And so it's, the, the solution is dramatically improved from the current existing solution. But I agree with your analysis that we're not hitting zero and we'll have to develop a solution that does.
Okay. So to, to save you money, you know, it does seem like there isn't really a need to have a pole that's really tall in this location in order to light what's a relatively small parking area. Like this proposal to, for instance, put lighting that's below the height of the fence seems like it would give you what you need. So, or that you locate the pole away from the property line so that it's easier to shield it from the resident. So, you know, I think you should sort of stay away from this idea of maybe take the 30-foot pole and you drop it to 20 feet. It's still likely going to shed light on the windows at 20 feet. So, and imagine, and you can see from that, the photographs, how kind of miserable the light levels are there, so.
Yeah, and I, I would agree. I think the, the main concern of that light being shown on the, on the home there is due to the optics being incorrectly installed. I think, you know, we'll have to go back and, and look at it. It's a balancing act of providing enough light within the space for safety. And also, when you get down to lower mounting lights on a, on a fence, you have vandalism concerns and other concerns. And, and then also just the, the lack of power on the fence as well. So there's a lot of things to take into consideration, which we'll do. And then come up with the best solution that provides what you're looking for is zero foot candles on that property line, as well as gives Walgreens what they need within the parking lot. And at the same time, you know, any solution that we have, I don't personally work for Walgreens. We'll have to provide that to their engineering team for approval.
Okay. Okay, so, you know, to be kind of clear, it's, for us, it's not a balancing act. It's zero on the property line. So we're not going to negotiate because of this. There's just, if it means running new power lines to relocate the light fixtures, so be it, right? So it's not a negotiation. It's, it's got to be zero. And just put yourself in the place of the residential occupant who has to be imposed upon by this every night for their lives, right? The levels are so bright that you could arguably, you know, read in your house without turning the lights on. So Commissioner Vice Chirshanda has her hand up.
Okay, so with regards to the issue of vandalism, if the lights are mounted on the wall, which is low, the building has, the building has a pretty high, I'm, I'm looking at the photographs. I mean, it has a height, especially, you know, where the Walgreen pharmacy, that, that portion of the wall is high enough. It will not be possible for someone to scale, especially, it's, it's way beyond eight feet. So if you were to mount two lights that faces straight out towards 94th Street, or even one light that faces downwards towards 94th Street and keeping the light pole that's at the corner of 94th and, and I forget the intersection, Astoria, I think, then that should be sufficient, I think.
We can look at that as a solution.
The parapet wall is quite high for this building. So you can take advantage of the height of the parapet wall and mount something there. It's, the maximum height is 25 feet. I, I see if that can be used. And the one towards the residential portion, it's at a height of 22 feet. So that's a reasonable height from which you can point it straight out towards 94th Street. That will take care of the lighting along that stretch, which is the darkest corner. If you take that, remove the light that's next to the residential.
Appreciate the suggestion, yeah. We'll look at all options to come up with the best solution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so Eric will go ahead and take a look at all the possible solutions to get the end result, which is a zero foot candles at the property line. And then we'll develop that and submit that to the board. The other issue
Haven't we discussed before shortening these light pools?
Have we discussed?
Yeah. We, we did discuss shortening these light pools. Am I correct?
There, there was a mention of that at prior hearing, yes.
Thank you.
I, I think he's just expressing frustration that we're still at this. But I think part of the problem is we're dealing with this corporate, put in a requisition for an activity and the engineers respond and all of that sort of stuff.
These are technicalities. If, if the only solution is to shorten this, it's either to do it or not do it. It's useless to submit something while knowing it's not going to fly. It's a waste of time for us and waste of, waste of time and money for them. I don't know, why is that?
Well, let me just, let me just point out that the administrative requirement for, for lumen analysis, I think was issued in July, if I'm not mistaken. And the process of correcting this was begun well before that. So for what it's worth, we were acting in good faith based upon what we thought we could achieve in reducing the light impact upon the neighboring residential property, particularly in view of the fact that we realized it was installed incorrectly. Okay, now, having been made aware that the zero foot candles is an absolute requirement, that's where we're engaged in, in trying to correct that. But it is a corporate, it is also a corporate issue that we're going to have to resolve.
I just want to clarify. The administrative notice was only issued in July, if that was when, to clarify how measurements are taken in the field. That's what it was for.
Yes.
And to, and to clarify that, measurements have to be taken in the field. Zero, zero lumens on the property line.
It's way back.
For years, I think predates my appearance here. So
Thank you.
Yeah, so it, it was just the methodology of how to establish that that's the fact. That's what was formalized with that administrative notice because we were kind of investigating on our own, how do you do measurements in the field?
Understood.
Okay, all right. Okay, so.
The other issue that was raised was regarding the signage. The, the plans we submitted in, show signage and shows the calculation of signage. And the signage does exceed the 50 square feet, but it's signage that existed when this variance was originally granted. And I will, I just want to remind the board that this variance was granted for a commercial use in residential zone where there are no sign requirements. And the size of the sign was part of the originally approved plan.
So if you can show us that the board actually approved a larger than 50-square-foot sign, I'd like to understand how they approved it because it exceeds the C1 regulations. And then the next part of it is, again, perhaps they didn't look at a 50-square-foot sign. They looked at a sign that measured less because of the way the measurement was taken.
We can take a closer look at that. But the fact remains that this, this was not a C13 zone when the variance was approved. It was a residential zone.
I know, but the C1 is what the board looks at as the maximum lighting level, I mean signage levels, because it's going for the lowest overlay possible to, to limit excessive signage, right? So we always look at a C1. Most of the resolutions, though I don't have this one in front of me, say that it needs to comply with the C1 regulations, where 50 square feet of illuminated is the standard, is, is the requirement. And perhaps at the time they approved that the sign was not illuminated. I mean, I, I don't know without digging in. But again, I urge you to take a better look at how the measurements were done.
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
And I believe there were no other issues that were raised.
All right. Anybody else, any commissioners want to add anything? So then go to the public. Sorry, 4297BZ93-20 Astoria Boulevard, Queens. The Zoom webinar ID number is 978-669-3388. Passcode is 423431. Call number is 646-558-8656. And if you're already in, it's raise your Zoom hand. Right? I think anyone's in. Hold, hold on a second. Let's just see. Yeah, we do have some names I don't recognize. So if you'd like to speak on this application, please raise your Zoom hand. Or there's one phone number, you have to dial star nine to raise your Zoom hand. So we'll give it a second. How much time do you need to respond to this? And in, in particular with respect to the lighting, come up with a solution that's actually going to bring the light, light levels to zero?
Well, we're going to need some time, probably a month. Four to six weeks.
Is that enough, Mr. Ryberg?
Yes, that should be adequate.
Four to six weeks, okay. So I don't see any hands up. So, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is 1924503BZ160-11 Willets Point Boulevard, Queens. I don't see that, no. No, I don't see anyone. Yeah.
If you're here to speak on this application, please raise your Zoom hand or press star nine if you're on the telephone.
Can someone text Maria?
I'm texting them now.
Okay. There's one person who called in, as we said, if you would like to speak on this application, which is the McDonald's, Willets Point Boulevard. Please raise your hand by dialing star nine. That's for phone callers. Should we go to second call?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I think we should. Okay. Oh, wait, are we, are we, she in? No? All right, let's go. I, I don't see anyone having joined in. Carla, you can tell them that we're going to second call. Item number 20, oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Item number 207204BZ14154-54 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
I should also, there's somebody on named Adam Wolf that should also be allowed to join.
He's in. Yeah, Adam's here.
Okay.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Adam Wolf?
He's on mute.
I'm unmuted.
Oh, there, okay.
Okay. Do you affirm?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed, Ms. Foldear.
Elise Foldear from Eric Palatnik PC. I first wanted to say that unfortunately for this application, we had our first hearing put off because of COVID. And then our first, first app, our first hearing was in May. But this didn't have a dismissal or anything like that. It just got put off due to COVID and started its application process, like the list, hearing your comments in May, that was our first hearing.
Okay.
I would like to go through all the, the things we've been working on so far with you, if you'll allow, and then we can discuss anything you want to do. So signage, the signage on the plans, I do have an updated set, but it wasn't enough time for you to review. But it has been updated in compliance with C1 sign standards. The operator can keep many of his repair signs while staying in compliance with, with C1 standards, but we will show you that on the plans.
So, sorry, before you go on, you, you didn't submit these plans, right?
Yeah, because we didn't know this was going to get a, we worked to, to make sure I, we could answer all your questions in the past week once we knew that you weren't adjourned.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I can submit them today, but you wouldn't have had time.
You can't review them, okay.
The ATM machine has been removed and we will give a photograph in the next submission. The merchandise from outside has been removed and we can provide a photograph in the next submission. The ramp is dimensioned and the site is ADA compliant and we'll provide that on the plans in the next submission. The southernmost curb cut on Parsons is 37 feet and we can show that on the next submission. The owner is working on removing the paid parking. The parking will be restripped. We'll provide photographs in the next submission.
Sorry, what kind of parking?
There was an issue about paid parking. They wanted to, you guys wanted us to restripe and confirm there's no paid parking. You asked about debris and garbage. We'll provide photographs in the next submission. You asked about fencing along the perimeter. We'll provide in the next submission. Wheel stops, the owner's been working on fixing the wheel stops and replacing them and we'll provide a picture in the next submission. Remediation, they do a quarterly report. It is not with this owner specifically, it is with Shell. But there are 11 active monitoring wells, five air sparge wells, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, and four deep vapor extraction wells. And they're currently still monitoring these wells and there's a quarterly report issued each season. The trash enclosure and parking will be restored back to the previously approved condition once the remediation is completed. But it doesn't seem like that is near in the future because they're still monitored. Notice to neighbors, when we know there's a hearing, it's not adjourned, we will renotice. So next time we will renotice to neighbors. And then the issues we'd like to discuss is the lighting, the landscaping, the vacuum station, and the curb cuts. As we discussed in a previous hearing, lighting, from our experience, has gotten extremely, extremely expensive during COVID. It is really, really difficult. And this application had full, almost full support from the community board. There was one abstention and there has been no complaints about lighting or landscaping. And this operator has both financially relied on and legally relied on in contract And this operator has both financially relied on and legally relied on and contracted with his operator for lighting and landscaping, which were both reviewed in the previously approved plans. There's even a stamped lighting approved plan from the previously approved plans. The vacuum station is also shown on those plans.
Sorry, don't understand. You're saying the light, you shouldn't, we shouldn't have to do the landscape? I'm sorry, I don't know.
You asked for the land, so the landscaping, we understand complying with the previously approved plans. You asked for eight to 10 foot buffer, which would, we would have to dig up the site and change. And we were relying, we have been relying on the previously approved plans. And it's a huge burden to dig up the whole site and redo all of the landscaping. So we're asking that we can maintain what was previously approved by the board with landscaping.
Confusing, okay.
You, okay, is that not in your notes?
No, I'm looking at the drawings first. I can't go as fast as you because.
Okay, sorry. So in the previously approved set, we can look at the drawings. There is a planting bed that goes along the left and rear of the site with plants.
Yes.
We'd like to keep that as is. Because that is what the. We've relied on legally and contracted financially. And it's just too expensive, especially in these really difficult times, to redig up the site. And there's been no complaints about this, so.
Okay, I can't do this so fast, so keep talking.
So, I mean, that is the point we're trying to say is, we understand your concerns, but their community board approved it and there's been, there's been no objection to these items. So we're just looking to maintain what's been previously approved. That's what I'm trying to point out.
Okay, again, keep going because I'm not sure.
And then I guess this is even more confusing and that's why I was stopping here. But if you look at the previously approved plans, you, there was a question about asphalt. That went over the side onto the sidewalk area. And you can see that asphalt on these previously approved plans on Parsons.
Yes.
So that asphalt was approved like that. And we have a survey as well from. Let me find the year. From 2007, which the sidewalk asphalt boundary along Parsons is exactly as it is today. That was another question that came up. And we plan on submitting all of this material in our next submission.
Okay, now I'm just going back to the landscape, I'm just looking at my notes. Says site is in need of upkeep, landscaping is sparse, fencing in need of repair, extraneous signage needs to be removed. It looks like trash is being stored behind the fenced enclosure. Site doesn't look like the approved plans. The landscaping that was previously approved is not as shown on the plans. Those are my notes without going back and listening to the hearing.
And that's all we're intending on show, that's what we want to intend to show you in our next submission is showing you that the landscaping will, does comply with the previously approved plans.
So then the other comment was landscaping adjacent to the residential building must be robust. There are some existing trees, but they, do they provide screening below the tree canopy? That was part of the question because the trees are tall. And so it's not really screening the, the activity on the site. It's providing shade over the site, but not screening it from the residences. So we wanted better photos of the perimeter conditions. The paved asphalt area along Parsons is extending beyond the property line. So that's the issue that we often have, we've had this in another case. Where the asphalt implies that the property line goes further into the public way when it doesn't. So in one case, we had the owner put up bollards to make it clear that that's the end of the property line. So they don't basically park on the sidewalk. That was one way of approaching it. Seems to be implying to pedestrians, this is not part of the public sidewalk. Landscaping is extremely poor, I'm reading Commissioner Shonda's notes. Landscaping is poor, needs to be denser. Along the rear lot line at the corner, there's debris, tires restored behind the building. Planter at the corner extends beyond the property line. Air compressor should be moved to Northern Boulevard away from the residential site. Need a site, need an operational plan. Then about the ATM machine or. I'm just looking, I'm continuing just to look at these notes. So I don't see anywhere that we.
Maybe we discussed it at hearing because it's in my notes.
Okay, so, you know, so I don't know, but the issue has to do with a robust planting area. That provides a buffer. And so the plans are not dimensioned, so I don't actually know how deep that planting bed is. So, you know, to say it was installed according to what was approved, I don't know because it's not dimensioned. How do you know how big it is?
Okay.
It's not shown on either drawing as dimensioned. It's just sort of floating out there. And then there's on the drawings. What is this one? The existing and proposed Z1 dated. I don't know. Submitted here anyway, 102119. And I don't know what the date is because there's several dates. Says 2011, which sounds odd. I don't know. Anyway, according to that one, there's no planting at all shown. There's only trees shown at that back wall that is up against the residential property.
That's what's on the, on the previously approved plans, there's two large trees and one bush.
Okay, so that's the point is the trees are now tall. And it doesn't provide any protection at, at sort of eye level.
Okay.
For the owners, for the neighbors, right? So something has to happen there. It does say there's a five foot high brick wall. So maybe we, you also need photos as part of the problem where we're not sure what's going on. Okay, so again, the best way to always handle these applications is perimeter photos all the way around, looking at the perimeter. And then turning around and looking inside the site. And then, and keying it to the plan. That way we have a really good sense of what's going on.
Okay. And then I guess back to the asphalt thing because you just mentioned it. If you look at the landscape area in the corner of the site, it does go in the previously approved plans into that asphalt area.
Right, but it's not, it's, but now it's clearly shown as over the property line. So it's one thing made, I don't know what to say about the planter. But you can't have it imply to pedestrians that they're not supposed to be walking there because it belongs to this property owner. It doesn't. So in the, in the past, you know, there's another planter that's in the correct location. That shows it lining up with the building next door on the property line. And that, and so there needs to, at the very least, be some kind of delineator until the asphalt is changed to concrete. It shouldn't. They're basically adverse possessing city property. Yeah, Maestro Shonda, go ahead.
So. I'm conjecturing. And I think the reason that corner curb planting bed was extended out. Was if you look at where the concrete curb cut is, the closest to the intersection of Northern Boulevard, the one on Parsons. I think this concrete landscape extension was done to provide more of a buffer between the vehicular. So that the vehicle does not go into the corner of Northern and Parson where there is a bus stand and there are people who do wait. That's a very busy intersection, pedestrian intersection. So maybe this was a way, which is kind of a warped way to go about it. But maybe that was the reason why it was extended. So that the vehicles entering or exiting that curb cut, the northernmost curb cut on Parsons. Will be prevented from cutting into the Northern Boulevard entrance. That's the only thing I can think of. And, and the reason I'm saying that is because I, being a former liaison to Community Board seven. I know those kind of suggestions in those days in, I'm dating myself, were considered. So.
I think it's been enough to just have the planter at that corner and it blocks your access to that curb cut?
I, I don't know. I mean, I think the, if you look at the, the curb cut at the corner, it's very close to the intersection of Northern Boulevard, Parsons. It's less than 50 feet. It's like within 10 feet of it. That's very close. And I think this was done more to prevent vehicles from going in and out from that. From like making a quick turn from there onto Northern Boulevard or something like that. This was to probably provide a little bit more ease of flow of vehicles to the site from that intersection. That's, I'm conjecturing, I'm totally conjecturing. But be that as it may, the current condition there is very different. It is still, it still remains a very heavily pedestrian flow, a traffic area. It has a high pedestrian volume, that intersection of Parsons and Northern. So I still remain concerned that, that landscaping is there. And it is, it is reducing the amount of pedestrian walkway. Because of the visual message that that asphalt paved area is providing. And the, and that landscape area extending beyond that.
Yeah.
I mean, ideal would be to relocate that concrete curb cut that's at the corner intersection of Parson and Northern. And move it further into Parson, away from that intersection, move it more southward. But that's a much more costly, I think, undertaking.
Yeah. Plus, I'm not sure it helps you get into the, the dispensers. It's, it's the spot you need to get to the dispensers. Either you get rid of it completely and only use the Northern Boulevard access, which probably isn't a good idea.
Well, we do not have a vehicular flow, so I really don't know how the, how that corner, northernmost curb cut on Parson, Parson is being used. If it, is it an only entry or is it, or only exit?
So means we need the vehicular diagram, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So are we, as a final, just to understand what's happening, suggesting that? The planter needs to be shortened? Do we not know yet? Do we want to see vehicular?
Well, for sure, we don't want, yeah, I mean, I think it's quite odd there and it does, it really necks down, which may be a really busy pedestrian corner. But for sure, all of that asphalt that's implying that it's owned by this property owner, that's not okay. I'll bet if you were to look at pedestrian images. People won't be walking on that because they think it's part of the gas station.
And they don't. When I went to the site visit.
Right.
They were, they were staying to what visually was a city sidewalk.
Yes. So it's clear that that's not permitted. And whether or not the last drawings showed it, it doesn't mean that it was permitted. It's just that board didn't pick up on this obvious fact. Because maybe the property line wasn't clearly delineated on that drawing. Okay.
And Madam Chair, if you go to photo number eight from, from the original submission. You can see the condition of the planting. This is from 10212019 submission. If you go to photo number eight or view seven. You can see the condition of the rear wall. And, and behind the fence, it is kind of becoming an area to dump unnecessary stuff. Because the foliage has grown high enough where there is enough clearance at grade level.
To just throw stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. So wait a minute, photo number seven?
It's view number seven versus slide number eight.
Oh, I don't, I don't see the garbage. I see a tall wall, maybe I'm looking at the wrong set. So it's, when was this submitted?
This was 10212019?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, 102119. The image that I'm looking at actually has cars parked in the foreground, parking up against wheel stops. And maybe it's not the same image.
It is the same one you're looking at. And to the right, do you see the white drums?
Yes.
Okay, if you go behind that, there's a fence. That is the fence within the property and behind that is the solid wall, which is the, so above. So the space between that fence and the solid wall is still within the property line.
Ah, okay. And so when on your site visit, you saw that filled with trash?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't know how we regulate this, but that obviously needs to be cleaned up and photos provided.
I think providing more in-ground like IV and things like that grown there will just keep it from becoming a dumping ground, at least as long as the landscape remains.
Right. This site has, I'm a little confused now. So there's a very tall wall, that's the wall of the adjoining resident?
The brick wall is the residential, the concrete one is commercial. The brick one to the left, brick wall to the left is the residential wall.
Okay, yeah, I see. So it's the brick wall, it's the apartment building that we're really talking about, I guess, no?
Yes, and I don't think there is a very good picture of that condition. There is one that's a long shot. If you look at view number 14. It's not very visible, though it's from the street. But, so we need a more up-close photo.
Yeah, okay.
And there you do see the trees are tall, but it needs to be more dense.
Okay. And you know, this kind of thing is really the expertise of, of a landscape architect. Not just anybody who plants, just shows some stuff on a drawing. Because you've got trees that are, cause shadow. And then you have plants that do well in those circumstances. But you can't just put anything there because if they need light and they're not shade growers, they're not going to survive. So it needs to be somebody with knowledge about this who does it. And not like, not an amateur, okay? No offense to the architects or engineers, but most of them are amateurs as regards landscaping. Okay. Okay.
And I guess the only thing I feel like we really haven't resolved is a lighting plan was approved in the previously approved plan.
Say again?
A lighting plan on the previously approved plan was approved.
So, but you know that the goal is zero over the property line. So the board is not a lighting, are not lighting engineers. The goal is zero over the property line. And just do it again, every single time I have to say this. If you lived in that little apartment building right next door and you could read through the light that was provided by the joining gas station. That is not okay. Because it means that they have to participate in the, in the commercial operation next door. So it doesn't matter whether the lighting plan was approved or it wasn't approved. We learned in a prior hearing that the light, the wrong light was installed. And for all of those years, the neighbor has had to be, has been woken up, like stay awake at night. Because there's so much light streaming into their window. That's just not right. So our goal is zero, except at places where you're right up against a wall that has no windows. In which case that, there's nothing to be done about that and the lights reflected by the wall, okay? So what's, what's not resolved? I say, if I look at the photographs that I, we were just alerted to. You can see how that planting bed directs people away from that section of the sidewalk. So it seems that the planting bed, though you know me, I love planting, really needs to be removed from there. Because it's beginning the sort of obstruction in the sidewalk. And if you return the sidewalk to its width. That's directly in the way of continuation and sidewalk.
I guess, if, do you have anything else to? I guess um if, do you have anything else to, we should bring up? Or I would say, Adam, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm only, uh, it's Adam. Uh, my, my only concern obviously is that if I'm not mistaken, our canopy there is like on the property line. I, I just don't know how feasible it is to have zero lighting at the property line when your canopy is at the property line.
What do you mean you can't, at the property line, which property line?
On Parsons, my canopy fascia is probably within five or six feet of it.
Sorry, not, no, no, no. We only talk about the light that spreads over into the residential property. And that's to the street, so you, yeah.
That was not abundantly clear to me, and now it's clear. Perfect.
Okay, we're always concerned about spreading onto residential, not so much commercial, depending on what kind of commercial activity it is, right? And how bright the light is.
So, so then following your discussion earlier, so we have three, four aerial lights? And I believe all of them are, I, I don't have, I don't have yard pictures, but aren't all four of them up against brick walls?
No.
Which, which ones are not? The two, the two, the one on the corner, uh, on the west corner should be against the grocery store. That has no windows.
So we're, we're looking at the lighting spread. There's a light pole right in the center of the yard, what's labeled yard, which is like an area way for a residential apartment building. They have many windows in their yard facing into the yard. And the lumen spread diagram says the lumen levels are twenty-three, thirty-one, twenty-nine in the yard. But that means the windows are well lit by that light pole.
Hold on.
That's on Parsons, Adam.
So there.
Yeah, that's on the perpendicular to Parsons.
So it's the light in the middle of the planting, of the, of the neighbor's courtyard. Okay.
There's that. And then um, well, according to this other one, the fence is high enough to block the light.
Though it's, it's really just that light. The other lights, I just looked at a quick drawing. They're all, they're all against brick walls.
Not all. There's, well, there is this five foot, I think there's a big level change because there is a five-foot-high brick wall that's described as blocking all of the light that goes from twenty-seven to zero in a very short distance. So I, I don't actually understand how that happens unless the light pole.
There's a fence, there's a fence.
Right, but how, it's a fence. But is it a opaque fence that is, how high is the light pole?
If you go to, can I make a suggestion? If you go to, again, the photographs that were submitted back on twenty-seven, twenty-one, and if you go to view number seven and uh then view number eight, that light pole um along that property line, which is uh the western property line along the rear, does not even exist.
Oh. Yeah, you're right. There's nothing.
So you're good. Remove it. Revise the analysis. Or use that as the lighting pole and remove the one that is uh in the yard.
Okay, I, I, I see. All right. I'm looking at it now on a Google map. I, I don't have your photos, but that's okay.
So, because that's the other part. So I don't know who owns that fence. It's in really bad shape, but it seems to be up against, it's different than what's shown on the drawing. So this is the other problem. We look at drawings and we think the drawing, this is a comment Commissioner Sheta made on another thing. We look at drawings, the drawings say one thing, then you look at the reality, the reality is completely different. So how do the drawings represent reality? So if you look at that, the wall where we thought there was a light and um there's a five, there's a low wall, sort of a knee wall of unknown height, maybe three feet. Um, and then behind it, there's a fence that looks in bad shape.
The black, the black fence, the black chain link fence?
Yes, exactly.
That's not, that's not mine because I can see on the survey, it wraps around the neighboring property.
Okay, so the drawing shows that corner open to the neighbor, whereas the photograph shows a concrete block wall that looks like it's about twenty feet high.
Yeah, okay.
Changes the analysis, right?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I, but on the survey, I can see that that chain link fence actually goes west. It goes to the end of my building and starts going west. So it must just be on our property line, but not my fence.
Okay, but it, but so importantly, it needs to be clear that there is a building. So if I just look at the drawing, the, the, the standard language for um where you have a black, a blank wall, or a wall anyway, is that the, the building is hatched or the wall is hatched. So it indicates to us that there is something blocking the light, right?
Yep.
But if you look at the lumen spread diagram, there's nothing, um, there's no hatching. There's nothing to indicate that in fact, at that corner, I'm looking at a wall that's about twenty feet high.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
Okay.
And Adam, I don't know how fast it goes, but I sent you the photographs. I'm looking.
Uh, I, I, I mean, I generally memorize most of them, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, understood.
All right. So now we know what to do. So it's good we had, it's good not to adjourn these hearings and instead to use them as a way to move forward, please? Okay?
Understood.
Okay. So, so just so as a takeaway, I, I, I understand the sidewalk and I'm supposed to be cutting the, the planter by five feet, I estimate-ish on the corner.
Yes. I mean, I don't know if it's five feet, but according to the, the survey or let's say the.
My best guess, it's five.
It lines up with the building adjacent to you.
Yep, understood. Yep.
And it's a shame about planner, but I don't know what else to say. It's a busy pedestrian. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, anything else that we left out?
Yeah, and removing the airbag from the location of Parsons to Northern Boulevard.
Hmm.
Where is the airbag?
So the airbag is located, uh, airbag and um they're located right at the intersection, uh, not at the intersection, on the.
Oh, yeah.
Southernmost uh edge of Parsons Boulevard, close to the concrete, uh, the last, southernmost cut on Parsons. And um.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a concrete-based vacuum station.
Oh, oh, yes.
And uh there's a concrete-based air station. Those two can be located easily on the Northern Boulevard uh frontage. Um, and that way you're providing that service both for the handicap parking space and for an additional one there. Um, and it would not be an issue um at all. Uh, my concern is that because the asphalt extends out by having a uh air station and airbag right at the corner, and I did see it, that there was a car that was on that asphalted area that was on the city side because people think that's part of the property.
Hmm. Okay. So that's like essentially next to parking space ten?
Yes, yes. Move it from parking space one and put another parking space next to ten and have your airbag and air tower and um vacuum station there.
Okay. Good. Okay, good. And so the only other thing is um this asphalt that's continuing out the five feet, unless there are bollards, and I don't know how that works with the free passage into the dispensers, it really does need, the material needs to be changed to sidewalk concrete.
Um, and I want to add something. The number of vehicles that are parked on the site is much more than what is shown. Um, and especially along the frontage of Northern Boulevard, the curb cut that is uh located on the extreme west side of Northern Boulevard, it's hardly being used because it is used for park, I mean, that entire area is for parking. Um, I'm not even sure how vehicles are navigating past those uh parked vehicles. So we do need a circulation plan and, and reconsider where all these curb cuts are and if they are needed or not.
Hmm. Okay. Well, you'll find out in the circulation diagram whether they're actually working.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. All right. So um I'd say to start with, um, what we need is drawings to show how all of this is going to be handled and then moving forward, um, right?
Yeah. Yep. So we can get you some photographs of easier things and like removing garbage and what you've asked for in the next submission.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you. So let's move to the public.
Seventy-two oh four BZ, one forty-one fifty-four Northern Boulevard, Queens. Zoom webinar ID number is nine seven eight six six nine three 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 eight eight. Passcode is four two three four three one. Call in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. And if you're already in Zoom, raise your hand.
So you raised your Zoom hand, there are two.
Star nine.
Yeah. So there are already two people with phone numbers on the Zoom call. If you want to speak on this application, star nine to raise your hand. Um, in the meantime, um, uh, how much time do you need to respond to this?
Um, I don't think we need a lot for the drawings. Adam, do you, how long do you think you need to take some of those photographs?
Um, well, once we clean it up, I, I don't know. I mean, it's just, you know, with, with COVID and the weather, it's kind of hard to get some of it done just because it's cold out now, but I don't know what's standard. A month or so? Shouldn't take me that long.
Yeah, that's fine. We're not talking about doing concrete work or plant.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just went through my guys. Concrete work and planting, we're, we're way out of season now, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just talking about basically photographs of the site cleaned up.
Yep.
Um, and drawings to show what your plan is.
Right. Yeah, that's, that should probably be doable.
So yeah, a month or so, or a little longer.
Okay, all right, great. Um, I don't see anybody dialed in, so um I think, and that's good. Thank you. Um, and uh we'll, I'll assume a month or so to submit, okay? Thank you. And we'll let you know when the hearing is scheduled for next.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So I'd like to give everybody a ten-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, um, so Juan Reyes is, is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that, that's up next. Um, is, is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. Um, so yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier, say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier. Say four ten, so four twenty we come back, okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to give everybody a 10-minute break. It's.
I was just gonna ask you.
Okay, so then.
Before you do the break, Madam Chair, so Juan Reyes is in the room for the other. So you want to call a second call when we come back?
Yes, so that.
Okay.
Up next is is Maria also participating?
I think it's just Juan.
Okay, anyway, all right. So yeah, we'll do that on the second call. So it's four oh six to make it easier.
Madam Chair, I just also wanted to alert you that Charles Appelain from the Community Board is joining.
Okay. Thanks.
For Willits Point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I think, do we have all the commissioners? Yes, we can proceed. Oh, we're, yeah, we're on, we're live. Go ahead.
Go.
Yep.
Okay, we're recalling item number nineteen two forty-five oh three B Z one sixty dash eleven Willits Point Boulevard, the Bronx.
One.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Okay, let me swear you in.
Okay.
Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, or to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, state your name for the record and proceed.
Juan Reyes, Partner of Safe-Air Shaw Law Firm. So, okay, so as the Executive Director stated, we have a member of Community Board seven. Charles Appelion is on, as well as the owner, Patrick Miller. As well as Jared Jones is an engineer from Bull Engineering. The engineers aware of the comments.
Just a second. We didn't know that they were part of the team, so they need to be sworn in too. Not Mr. Appelion yet, because he's, of course, speaking for the Community Board.
Mr. Jones and.
Jones, yeah, so let's.
Miller and Jones.
I'll say, okay, so Mr. Miller, Mr. Jones, please raise your right hand. State. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth in your testimony before this board, or to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Mr. Miller?
Go ahead, proceed, Mr. Miller. I just unmuted you.
Hello?
Miller, we're swearing you in. Did you hear the? Affirmation, Mr. Miller? He seems not to be able to hear us.
All right, do you want to proceed with Mr. Reyes and Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, I understand there are there are concerns. There's actually the Community Board. Seven had called us. They would like a wider curb cut. I know that the chair and the board had concerns about it. And so, and there are also some efficiencies that were. Put in the plan here. And I think Jared Jones should talk about those as well, like online ordering before you come. To the McDonald's and a more efficient menu board. So Jared, if you can. Discuss your ideas about the larger curb cut and the two separate curb cuts.
Yeah, so there would. I guess there's two things when it comes to this curb cut. Separating them out by zoning code, we need eighteen-foot separation. Between curb cuts on the same property. I don't know if it's in this board's power to grant that relief. But that's going to be just a nonstarter with the D O B. Once we submit the applications for curb cuts. For those curb cuts, because they're going to be too close together. We're in the neighborhood of. Less than ten feet separation distance between what would be the two proposed curb cuts. I know the other option that was talked about was making a larger curb cut. And again, based on zoning code. We're only permitted a twenty-nine-foot curb cut, including the splits. Now, there's relief that can be sought from the D O T. But that's not a guarantee that the D O T will grant said relief of the curb cut to make it. Whatever width we needed to be thirty, let's call it thirty feet, thirty-five feet, whatever it is. And again, I'm not sure if the the board can grant relief for a wider curb cut. I would, I think we would all prefer a singular wider curb cut, but there are steps that would have to be taken in order to. Present that to the board.
So, so what, how many feet are between the two curb cuts if you were to do two curb cuts?
If, I haven't drawn it up, but it's probably going to be somewhere in a neighborhood of five to ten feet.
Oh, that's a big difference of neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so we don't, the answer is we don't know yet.
I don't have the answer for you today, no, but it's going to be less than the zoning code requires of eighteen. It's not even going to be close to it.
Right. Yeah, I don't know again about what our parameters are in curb cuts. This is not a variance application. I don't know if we have any special permit authority on curb cuts. Without trolling through the zoning resolution.
Not, not under the provisions of this special permit.
No, no, if there's another one somewhere, something like that. If if with D O T's review. There is some kind of allowance for closer curb cuts for the same use, something like that, because that's what we're talking about. Seems like we see curb cuts a lot closer than eighteen feet, but I don't know.
Yeah, based on the curb cut, any curb cut. Either on the same zoning lot or the adjacent zoning lot need to be eighteen feet separation. And the maximum width in this particular location is twenty-nine feet, including displays, which. The current plan, the board should have in front of them is the twenty-nine foot now. Again, going larger than that, we would need to go to the D O T to get their permission to widen it. But again, I'm not aware of if the board can grant that relief as well.
So, right, so that, we often see larger than thirty-feet curb cuts, don't we? Thirty-four, thirty-five-foot curb cuts, I think, on these applications for gas stations, anyway.
I believe, Madam Chair, I believe gas stations are actually exempt, which is why you see it on applications.
Actually, even in the in the case of gas stations, at most, we have seen in some cases thirty-five foot, but no more than that. Thirty-foot, twenty-four-foot, eighteen, those are the more typical numbers that we see for curb cuts. In gas stations, it would be combination of thirty and eighteen, thirty or a twenty-four, that type of thing, or. One long thirty-five foot and then maybe one eighteen foot, something like that.
Right, but the point is that we do see wider ones, but if if the gas stations don't need to comply with this regulation, then that's a whole different. Bowl of wax, so. Well, so my problem with the the centered twenty-nine-foot curb cut is it's forcing. Access to both drive-in lane, both lanes. To basically drive over the sidewalk, because it's not, and a curb cut's supposed to be centered on the driveway. That's one, I think, one of the requirements, at least in residence districts, it's supposed to be centered. On the driveway, so it's not centered on either driveway. So I'm not sure that without checking the zoning, you're complying with all the provisions anyway. And I haven't checked the zoning on all of the criteria, but I just did that for a residential. Development, and you know, like in an R three or something where that's a clear requirement. I don't know if it is in. Commercial district or in a residence district, because that's part of what we have here, right? So that's the first thing. But in in any event. The bigger concern I have, which is why I suggested the two separate curb cuts, is that right now we see, and this is where Mr. Appelion will. Have the most experience. Right now, we see that cars that drive up the pass-by. Use that as a way to sneak into the drive-through. And that's part of what creates the backup, but it's also not allowed. Because they're effectively using the pass-by lane, which is in the R district, to get into this commercial district lane. Which is the drive-through. So you're actually, you're not allowed to do that. And the single curb cut seems to be encouraging that absent some clear division like a curb. Or bollards to prevent that from happening. So, so we need a solution on that, and we need a solution, of course, on. This idea that you can't just back this thing up and basically use. Public way for your reservoir spaces on this.
Yes, Madam Chair, so I, again, we provided some kind of bollard system. There was just a limit of how close we were bringing it to the property line for fear of, you know, cars constantly. Essentially running these over where they would be ineffective. I definitely understand the the board's concern about cars entering and using. The one lane incorrectly or the outer lane incorrectly. In my opinion, I think the only real way is. Is to get a wider curb cut. But again, I can't approve the wider curb cut. We have to go to the D O T and. They have to review it, and if they provide their, I guess, sign off of the wider curb, I believe that's the best option, but.
Why will, why will the wider curb cut work?
Because then we can center it. More on the two entrances. So you'll have a left lane and a more, you'll have a more dedicated left and right lane.
But what would, what would discourage, and I see Vice General Shanda's hand up just a second. What would discourage a person from doing exactly what they're doing now, which is driving on the pass-by lane? And then cutting into the drive-through lane. If you don't have a barrier that separates those two lanes. So it seems to me barrier is step one, and and. Maybe they're not bollards, maybe instead it's a curb. So that it's at least, you know, it's true that people drive over curbs, but then you know you're really doing something you're not supposed to be doing because you feel it, right?
So in the plan you guys have, there are bollards provided up to twenty.
Actually, we don't have a plan.
Oh.
Nothing was submitted that has bollards. So we may have worked on a plan that has bollards, but as far as I know, Commissioners, we don't have any plans that show bollards. You could do partial, you could do bollards and a curb. Maybe that's a way of dealing with it. But something needs to be a clear delineation between what's the drive-through and what's the pass-by.
Madam Chair, Mr. Appelion has his hand up from the Community Board, and I know this was a concern raised by.
Right, right, but before we, we're still in testimony by the applicant before we move to the public. I also want to hear from Commissioner Shonda, who has her hand up.
Um, thank you.
Oops, oops, sorry, sorry. I hit the mute button. Stop talking. I don't, you have to unmute. That was, I meant to put your hand down.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I, I was just looking through the zoning resolutions, resolution to see where any particular terminology, specific distance would be mentioned. I mean. One section, and I don't think this is what we are looking for, section thirty-six, thirty-six dash five thirty-one. It's regarding location of curb cuts in C one, C two districts map within R five D. Now, granted, this is not an R five D, but it's an R five. You know, there it talks about the minimum distance. Of thirty-four feet of uninterrupted curb cut shall be provided between all curb cuts constructed after two twenty-nine sixty-four. I'm not sure thirty-four-foot wide is ideal for this situation, but this is the place I. of thirty-four feet of uninterrupted curb cut shall be provided between all curb cuts constructed after two, twenty-nine sixty-four. I'm not sure thirty-four foot wide is ideal for this situation, but this is the place I, closest I could see where there's a reference to such a wide curb cut in a residential district in a C-one zone. Um, the um, another one, if you want to use, would be a curb cut regulation similar, that would be curb cut regulation of certain buildings in R-one and R-two for community facility use maybe, because that also is active. I mean, but again, there, the curb, uh, the curb cut is up to thirty foot, excluding space.
But, um, this is.
And there has to be a minimum distance of eighteen feet from any curb cut. That's another requirement.
Yeah, that's what Mr. Reyes said, or yeah, um, Joan said. Um, so, uh, here we are in, in a C-one-two and an R-three-two, right? So, um, it needs to apply to those districts. In order to apply, you could maybe use that as a way of making an argument to DOT to the extent it's allowing a right, wider curb cuts. Um, I understand that distance rule. So, but the problem is we, we need a solution. So why don't we, we'll, we'll hear from Mr. Appelian in a little bit, but I wanna um hear if there is other, other issues that um applicant wants to address.
No, Madam Chair, that was all I had. I don't know if, uh.
Maybe talk about the efficiency, Jared, you know, with the shorter menu board, just so that uh the chair, the chair is aware of all those efforts. And you were, or I think the owner wants to talk about it, actually.
Yes, yeah, go ahead. Miller needs to be sworn in though, because he didn't say anything before. So Tony, you wanna do that again? Mr. Miller? Can you hear us? You're, you're muted, I think. No, he's not muted, his mic is on.
Well, you're not muted, there's just no sound.
There's no sound.
Nothing.
Nothing, so maybe you need to call in also. Um, you have the phone number? Yeah, he's, I think he's calling in now. Call in and, and we'll let both things in, your visual and your phone number, okay? So, what number? Can someone read the telephone number for him?
Our call-in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. ID number is nine seven eight six six nine three 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 eight eight, and the passcode is four two three four three one.
So, Mr. Miller.
We're flashing it on the screen right now. You could just look on the screen and you could see the call-in number, uh, the webinar ID and passcode.
Yeah, hold it, leave it, leave the screen there until we see that he's made it in. Mr. Appel, yeah, I see his hand, okay. Yeah, let's, let's keep it up there for a little bit until he's finished calling here. Ah, there, no, I don't know. Yes, looks like, uh, if this is you, Mr. Appelian, with phone number, last three digits, seven through, seven six, then please um raise your Zoom hand by dialing star nine.
Not me.
No, not Mr., sorry, not Mr. Appelian.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Okay, great, and his hand is up, talking permitted, okay. So, if you can hear us, Mr. Miller, state, state your name.
Please unmute by pressing star six.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Beautiful, sorry about that.
That's okay, so we're going to first swear you in. Um, we didn't succeed with that yet.
Okay, do you, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, or to respond honestly to the board by my questions?
Yes.
Please proceed, Mr. Miller.
So, a couple of things I just wanted to address about this was, I, 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 I know that the laws and all this are involved, but I, I did wanna get back to we've never had a complaint to the community board about our drive-through, and I know I've always worked with the community board, and you can, when you talk to Chuck, he'll tell you, I do everything I can do within my power to work with them to get things done. It doesn't help me to fight any of this. That being said, I don't like, I, I'd still like the open drive-through, but I will tell you this. One of the things they wanted to alleviate some of the traffic was a second order point. On this new drive-through, we're gonna have two order points, which will speed up the drive-through. The other thing, moving forward, these menu boards are much more consolidated. So you're not gonna pull up to a menu board and see, I don't know if you've gone to any drive-throughs in the last five years, when you go up to a, a regular menu board, there's nine million items on there. With the new digital menu boards, it's like a TV screen, like you see in the restaurants. They're much more consolidated because the whole goal of the drive-through is to get you through it quickly. So not only will it be a better menu board, I'm gonna have two of them. Now, I, I heard the chairperson before um discuss about ordering. Within the last year, actually, as the COVID pandemic grew, so did McDonald's actually came into the twentieth, twenty-first century here with the, the app that we have at McDonald's. You can actually order on the app and drive into the drive-through and it'll be ready. Or you can go park your car in my parking lot and somebody will bring it out. Or you can order and walk in and it'll be ready. You don't, I mean, it is the ultimate in touchless. You walk in, your order would be ready. That's just one thing on top of the kiosks we have in the store. But the new drive-through is designed for speed. Like right now, you go into my, if you look at my menu board now, it's big, it's got a lot of choices, and you're not gonna have that. You're gonna have a, a more concise, a more focused menu board, and as, ju- just so, moving forward, so you know, with technology as it is, they're eventually gonna have it really personalized, so they'll know who you are if you order through the, the app or the drive-through or something, but they'll really be able to focus on who you are. I, I think the, the biggest thing I can always say, we, we've been doing this so long, and this has really been a a real monetary drag on me is how long this has taken, and when you talk to Chuck, I think Chuck will tell you. I'm a, I am a community guy, the, we talk about all the fences and stuff. The neighbor next to me was all for me. He sent a letter, that they're good neighbors, they do whatever I ask. I am a neighborhood guy. I do teachers' nights, I can afford to do teachers' nights because we have this drive-through that helps dr- drill sales in. I, I could, I give back to the community, all the local schools. You can go to the principals around me and they know who I am. I'm in those schools. I, I, it's just, it's, it's getting disheartening, this process of, we're looking for the problem, and, and again, I hope Chuck will talk to you and explain to you, I'll do what it takes. It, it's better for me for this drive-through to move faster. It makes me money, it makes the corporation money, it makes everyone happier. But I, I, I don't know where this went so awry with everything we looked at was a negative. I don't think McDonald's is a negative. I think our drive-through is a positive to this neighborhood. I think during the COVID, it's been a massive positive. If you, if, if the, you guys ever want to come to my store, call me. We'll stand in the drive-through, we'll talk to the customers, th- they're for me. So I, that's, the new drive-through, it's, it's just what everybody wanted. It's two menu boards, it's two order points, it's more concise, I don't wanna take up much more of your time, but we're working to get faster. That's what I do every day. That's my job, is to get faster. So tha- that's about all I need to say.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I, I think that um none of us were aware, even those who are um aficionados were aware of the uh, the app that allows you to order in advance and pick up and someone bring it to your car. Um, necessarily, I think we were guessing at that, not sure.
No.
But I think would be really helpful is if you could um describe that to uh Mr. Reyes and, or you do it yourself, which is cheaper.
I'll do it.
Um, write down your operational plan, like how it is that your drive-through will be speedy and how you're dealing with the sort of the excess. In other words, all of those people who are not gonna go to the drive-through because they ordered with an app and they're just gonna come and pick up their food and how they do that, like they either go through the drive.
It's all, it's, it's all within the system. If you wanted to order on the app, I order on the app, to be honest. I, I go with my family. I order on the app when I go to the local McDonald's. If my kids have to use the bathroom, guess what? I just, on the app, I put in-store pickup. I walk in, I don't know if any, there's a, there's a monitor up there, my order's twenty-seventy-two. They put it on the counter, I pick it up. If I wanna go through the drive-through, I get up to the speaker, I say, my order number's twenty-seventy-two, and they will say, oh, Patrick, how you doing? Okay, and pull up. Or, on the app, it'll just say, it asks you where to pick it up. I, when I pull into the stall, I'll see, okay, pick up stall number two. I'll put in the app, I'm in stall number two, and we walk out with the food. We currently do all that. And as someone said earlier, when you make a big order, and um again, our goal is to get seventy cars to that drive-through when it's busy, eighty cars. We do eighty, ninety cars, not so much ninety anymore, but certainly we, we do eighty regularly, is, hey, we have a big car, well, the cars behind you have small orders, could you please park over there? We'll bring it out to you. We don't wanna bring every to- order out, but we, we do it, there's a percentage of acceptability so we can move the cars through the drive-through. And I, I just go back to, I, I just want everyone to understand. I'm, I'm not here to slow it down, I'm here to speed up the drive-through. And again, when you speak with Chuck, when you speak, our goal is speed, my goal is speed, my goal is, I, I'm, I, we should be a team here. And as the team's saying, hey, all he's really doing right now is adding, he's adding improvements to this drive-through. So let's not bog him down. And again, I've spent five X in lawyer fees. That's, you know, five X to what I've done the last two go-arounds in this process. So I just, I, I apologize for bringing up that side of it, but it does get frustrating when I'm trying to improve the property. I've, I redid the store, I'll redo the parking lot and the drive-through, I'll have a whole new store. This is, this store was built in nineteen seventy-two for my father. We've redone it several times. You could, nobody in there would tell me that this is a fifty-year-old store, because we, I keep it, I spend money, I know where my money, it has to be for the neighborhood. It's gotta be a neighborhood store.
Thank you. Okay, so just write down what you described about your operations and how it works, so that we can um, yes, so that, that, we know that that's a way to avoid people going into the drive-through when it's too crowded to go into the drive-through. But then I do wanna reiterate that we should get a curb and the bollards on the drawings, so it discourages people driving from the pass-by lane into the drive-through, okay? Independent of a wider curb cut, okay?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll, we'll submit that plan. I, I was under the impression that they were already resubmitted, but who goes over to you for your review?
Right, but the curb wasn't, I'm pretty sure, wasn't considered, so please add that. I, I don't mean the curb cut, I mean a curb, you know, a little piece of concrete that separates the two lanes.
Aye.
Right?
Correct, no, it was only, it was only bollards to about twenty feet from the property line, but again, we'll, we'll have the plan forwarded so you can review, and then we can discuss further as necessary.
Okay, um, all right, so, uh, is there anything? Oh, so, and you did, yeah, Mr. Miller, I see your hand up, just one second. So I wanna make sure that the drawings show very clearly the district boundary line, both sides, R and C district. The relocation of the district boundary line by the twenty-five feet, and by what special permit and um the calendar number. And very clear where the twenty-five feet is, and that the remaining is the R district. And one of the reasons that there was confusion up until now is that the prior drawings didn't show that. So nobody knew why this was happening, right? So, um, and that's, that's sort of the intellectual curiosity that's necessary on the part of an applicant to figure out why in the world was this allowed in the first place in an R district, okay?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's, yeah, that's all on the, the new plan that you will receive.
Okay, great, thanks. Any, anything else? Um, so now we're gonna move to the public and um let's just do a general invitation, and then of course, Mr. Appelian is welcome.
So this case is two forty-five oh three BZ, one sixty dash eleven Willets Point Boulevard in Queens. Mr. Appelian?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if you could see me, but um, okay, it's okay. Um, so, um, yes, I, I concur everything that Patrick Miller said as about his operations, and probably a few months ago, he actually explained to me on-site uh, the addition of the second menu board and some of the efficiencies, which are gonna help everything. Um, so I incurred all that, but uh, here's the part that you probably are not gonna be happy for me to say, because a lot's been discussed about the curb, the bollards or reflectors, and then the curb cut. Uh, I've sent uh numerous emails and drawings into BSA. Um, the, the issue we have is not people trying to jump the line. What really happens is because traffic is coming from both directions, from the near lane and then uh crossing over the lane from the other side of traffic, they end up converging and almost causing like a V, the two cars hit each other in a V motion, coming from both sides, and, and they stop there. And what happens is they stick out. And what happens is now, if I wanna get by to go into the parking lot, if I wanna get by to pull into one of the curb pickup lanes, I can't get by. And what we've always advocated, this has been going all the way from day one with the application, is to extend, and, and there's a drawing that'll show that with the uh, the existing curb along the property line to be widened so that the asphalt would be widened and one curb could be used. Again, Madam Chair, I know there's been a lot of discussions. Um, by using either two curb cuts or by using any form of bollards or any form of curbs, it's gonna create more queuing, because what happens is it's more confusion. Instead of an open area and people being able just to navigate, now they gotta try to navigate into a bollard. Now they gotta navigate into either a bollard or a curb that they may or may not see because of the size of their vehicle, which is low. And, and then that's gonna create issues getting through the parking into the drive-through lane. So just in, in real brief, as um, a, a, as um, as a professional engineer, I understand looking at the drawings, what you may be seeing and what you may feel, however, mine goes a step further in practicality by being on-site and living through this, that what really happens is people aren't jumping the lanes, although not everybody, but I'm saying in general. The problem is they stick out of the drive-through lane into the passing lane of traffic. And by widening that lane and by making it one continuous curb cut, now anybody else that would like to get into the parking lot to the right and the rear can navigate around, and that opens up the traffic flow, and my concern is to get the cars off Willets Point Boulevard because they're queuing in both directions.
No, but so that's, that's the point is, I not, I'm not, so for Willets Point, an in, it's not an exit, it's only an entry through the site. Correctional arrows, right? The only way out of the site is to Louis Francis Boulevard, right?
Correct.
So, the, I don't understand, so the buildup is because there are too many people who wanna go into, and, and I understand Mr. Miller's point that he's using dated equipment right now. So, the, the, the reason for the backup is because there are people who wanna get into the drive-through and there's no place for them to go, there's an inadequate.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I think part of the problem, and Chuck again has been on-site, and he can attest to this. One of the things that was happening is the curb cut on the right side, the passenger side of the car. People were cu- swinging out because that, that left turn was a little tough. With all these new plans, we fixed that. We brought the left side in and we cut the, the right side curb back to make an easier left turn. That, I, that's what Chuck was addressing about people were swinging to the right. We've addressed that. I, again, I don't agree with the curb, putting a curb in the middle, because you're really gonna, if somebody wants to get out of the line, because that happens, people get in, oh, let me go, and they just scooch out. But that, just so we understand, that what Joe was, what Chuck was talking about was they, they move over, they kinda shift the, to the right a little because the left turn was tough. We've, we've improved that left turn. We've made the left turn a lot less of a harder, a lot less of an angle by pushing the right side curb back and it can sway out a little, and the left side curb, we softened the curb. So the, having the bollards and all that, I don't think, I agree with Chuck, I don't agree with, I agree with what he's saying, no bollards aren't gonna be necessary. What we've done with that drawing there, I think, is really gonna help the flow and not letting people, people staying more to the left.
How about we do a compromise? How about, I'm, I'm just looking.
Reflectors, how about reflectors?
No.
No, wait a second, let, let me, I see Commissioner Ollie Brown's hand up, so before I do my compromise offer, let's hear what she has to say.
I have to agree with both of the speakers. If you're gonna put some kind of a separation in the middle of that curb cut, you're gonna cause a lot of commotion, because most people trying to make that turn, if they're looking at anything, they're looking at cars that may be in their way, or maybe pedestrians, and they're gonna go right over that curb, boom. Because they're gonna be trying to make the turn, they're not looking for a curb in the middle of a curb cut. And those who are, it's gonna slow them down. Once you go over it the first time and almost lose your muffler, the next time, you're gonna go very slowly, and that's gonna defeat the purpose.
So I wasn't talking about a curb in the curb cut, I was talking about a curb that lines the line of the, of the drive-through. So as a way to make it clear that you're supposed to be in this lane, that was the reason. So as a way to make it clear that you're supposed to be in this lane, that was the reason for the bollards. But what I understood was they didn't want the bollards to continue all the way to the property line. They wanted to stop it before. And what I was suggesting is maybe a curb that eases down to zero. So that it makes it very clear where the demarcation line of the drive through is versus the pass by lane. And to the, and, and my, my, uh, offer on compromise was I get the idea that I'm third in line and I can't stand it anymore. And by the way, the kids don't decided that they want ice cream. So, um, that you want to get out of this line. So maybe at the point of the turn where it radiuses, that you have an, like an A patch. Where that's the place where you can drive straight and you go right into the parking lot. But it prevents anyone in the pass by lane from using that as a way to sneak in.
But you probably wouldn't, I, I can't imagine that one would, would sneak in at that point because it's past the ordering point.
Right, so that's a thing.
What would sneaking in do for you? You're not going to be able to get anything.
No, but that's the point is your escape would be after the ordering point.
Yeah, ma- ma'am chair, I, I, I think the sketch that shows the bollards where we're, we're proposing them. I think solves what you're kind of talking about where that lane is kind of separated and we're not really allowing for them to leave. But it definitely separates it where you're not trying to cut in. If we need to cut or remove two of them to allow people to leave. At some point during the drive through, we can, but I think the, the bollard scheme that we have resolves this issue. And I don't think a curb is the best thing because then you have a permanent barrier that you, you can't really remove. So I think we have a solution that addresses this comment that we could submit. Um, so I think we're really just talking about the width of the curb cut and how we want to address it.
Well, we, we can't control the width of the curb cut, so it is whatever zoning says, so whatever people may want. It's not what we have anything to do with, right?
Yes.
So, um. Can I make a suggestion? Um, I mean, I, I also am not comfortable with the idea of having a curb to separate out the pass by and the drive through. Maybe soft bollard could be one way to provide a more of a visual cue. And, and possibly painting the drive through in a dark yellow color or something with the saying that drive through. Would also make it visually abundantly clear that which is a drive through versus which is a paved. Or you pave it in a different material.
They will definitely have painting, painting done.
Com- commissioner, yeah.
Heavy painting will be done, striping and, and just so we all understand. I, I generally restriped that lot twice a year. I do it in the fall. I do it in the spring. So there'll be plenty of diagnosis of where to go. But again, I will say, one of the things we're talking about curbs is we, and with the community board and they were all agreement. We pushed that little curb on the right back because again, we do get some older people coming through and nothing against older people, but some people, curbs are bad. You know, like we've had one, one older person hit the menu board, like you, if you were in my draft, you'd wonder how that happened. And I had something, you know, so that one curb, they swing out a little wider sometimes, not that they're gunning it. They just, they get themselves, you know, and again, we've addressed all the, the turning ratios. But striping and all that, I agree with. Let's stripe it really well and I just don't like having something to separate.
Right. I was talking about why you cut back that one curb that's parallel to the building up at the top, the one R.
It's, so if you took the speaker closest to the building, so the, you, as you pulled in the lot, there's, there'll be one, one order point and the second order point. There's a curb on the right there. We actually, I believe we pushed that back a couple of feet because people would make the left turn. And they're, if they didn't make the left turn hard enough, they would hit that little curb. So would that force them sometimes to kind of sweep out a little to the right to make the left turn? But we addressed the turning ratio, which that was a big thing that I, I believe that was a big thing that made people push to the right. So they're not going to be pushing to the right anymore because they'll be able to make that turn.
Okay, fair.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, who's speaking? Mr. Appellium? Okay.
Yes. My, my, my concern about any of these channelization issues is that the lane is narrow. We're not talking about a ten foot wide lane or a twelve foot line way.
We are.
It, it's kind of narrow from the standpoint, what's going to happen is again. Anything with either visual or a curb is going to increase the queuing and navigation process.
So we, so you may not be looking at the most recent drawing that it is. Ten foot wide, um, drive through at a tall, wide pass by lane. So, um, I don't know if that changes anything in your view, but it is, these are wider lanes and perhaps.
Okay, then, then, then I, I'm looking, I don't have a date on this drawing that I have. But, uh, then, then I would only ask if you're going to do maybe a knockdown ballad, which might be a good idea. And then paint in the driveway, that we don't make it extend too far to the Willet's Point Boulevard entrance. Again, to allow room for people to navigate getting in, because if they can't navigate in, it's going to create the queuing issue.
Madam Chair, if I may, so the, um, so the drive through lane, as, again, you haven't seen this plan, but the drive through lane currently. Has a six inch yellow line that's painted on the drive through line. That's a McDonald's standard to separate the drive through lane from the bypass lane. And to address, and we can kind of work out how far it is from the property line, these bollards. But currently, the bollards are about twenty feet from the, the property line. Um, if we need to move that back to thirty to kind of give people more room to move, we can. But right now the bollards are roughly every five feet from that island. Um, north of the building extending along that six inch line to twenty feet from the property line to delineate them further. So ultimately, I think this plan is going to satisfy all of these comments. Unfortunately, you guys haven't seen it, but we can get this in your hands to review as soon as possible. So we can all just confirm that this is what we want and this solves the, or resolves the issue.
Okay, so I just want to point out something that you do need to keep in mind. The area that is in the residence district cannot serve the drive through. Because we don't have the authority to grant any drive through in the residence district. That's what all this trouble is about, right? So the.
Nothing goes in the drive through.
Right? So, so when you're talking about, you know, making it more breathing room and all of that to access the drive through. The breathing room isn't supposed to be in the residence district. That's part of the point, right?
Yes, so the drive through lane is in the, the twenty-five foot extension of the commercial district. Bypass lane is in the residential district.
So I'm concerned about the, the diagonal use that gets you into the pass by from the residence side. That's why I said two curb cuts to make it super clear. And I understand that you may be not allowed to do two curb cuts, but that's what.
Okay.
This is the underlying reality.
Yep, no, the, um, just to clarify, the, the drive through lane is in the, the commercial extension area and the bypass is in the residential. Um, again, we were trying to balance the bollards versus, um, putting them too close to the property line. There's a, there's a bollard that extends into the residential, so if we need to remove that bollard, so it's all in the commercial. Absolutely we can, which probably would help maneuverability at the entrance. But again, unfortunately, since you haven't seen the plan, I'm kind of just talking it out to you guys. But we'll get the plan into you for review as soon as possible.
I see Commissioner Shet just hand up. Go ahead. You have to unmute yourself. You're still muted. You're muted. There you go.
No longer. Uh, I, I, I did look at the plan and I, I, I'm sympathetic with the idea that to separate the two lanes, even partially. I, I did grab the plan and I, I, I just sketched something very quickly. I want to show it. So I'm not sure if you can see that. We can partially separate like up to the red, up to here. And then leave, leave us lot. If, if a car is willing to go out of the line, it could continue driving straight. And in the meantime, that's going to like prevent people who are willing to cut the line or to come from the passing lane. The lane that's going to the parking and cut into the, the drive through. It's going to be for them like the Mission Impossible, who make the turn and merge into that, that lane. It's going to be too late for them to do that because it's past the ordering point. And in the meantime, give the option for whoever is willing to grab ice cream or something is to continue driving straight and go to the parking lot. And if, if you want to put like a real concrete curb, that's fine. If you want to put, I'm okay with even removable, uh, bollards to put them. And if you think this is not a rush hour, you want to remove them, you could just take them and store them somewhere. And during that, like the rush hour, you could put them back.
So, so Commissioner, yeah, that's exactly kind of what I'm talking about. So where you have that red line along the outside of the drive through is a solid yellow line. And in essentially where the, the, the point of the twelve foot dimension on the bypass lane hits. Is where the first bollard from the property line starts. And then we have it as removable bollards all the way until it hits the curb line by the one foot radius. And again, if we need to remove those to allow them to leave, that's kind of what we're talking about from just a plan presentation. And like I said, unfortunately, you guys don't.
You're gonna need to make the spacing between the bollards like, like really tight to make sure that no car is going to be able to sneeze. In between two of the bollards and, and grab, like drive through the next lane.
Yeah.
You, you want to make sure that to make the spacing tight.
So it's set about five feet right now. If I need to tighten it up, I can, but five feet is generally, you don't get.
The other thing is that third car in is our, at the order point.
Yes.
So they're not going to get out once they order.
Yeah, that's a good point, yes.
You know, so once you get to that third car, that third car is actually ordering. So it's really the last two cars.
Yep, yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Five, I leave five feet.
No, sorry.
Need to tighten up.
Okay, okay, I think we've talked about this and we've got it. So I guess the question is, um, the only thing we really need then is that drawing that shows. How that's going to work. And we need Mr. Miller's operational plan about the, um, the methods for ordering alternatively. And the, how these two menu boards now work. So that we get a good sense of, um, the throughput under sort of new conditions, okay?
Yep.
So I think, I think that's actually it. Is there anything else that I left out from Commissioner? Um, okay. So, and in terms of the width of the curb cut, do your research. I want to say that if you're able to get a wider curb cut through conversations with D O T. You could always just, um, you could do that and then, um, file a, what do you call it, a letter of substantial compliance. Thus, if you want to widen the curb cut, but if there's a change in the plans, we, we would need to see that in the letter, okay? But you wouldn't have to come back for any hearings, okay?
Just, just so the boards are aware, you know, D O T is taking roughly three to four months to review curb cut widens like this. We can definitely pursue that and if, if they approve it, then we have no issue providing it. But we'll keep it as it is now on the plans and if there needs to change, it changes.
Right, so that would be something that happens in the future. You would basically ask for effectively what we call a letter of substantial compliance. So the D O B knows that we're okay with the change, okay?
Thank you.
Um, I, if I don't see, and it's how much time do you need to do these two things? So the, the operations and the change to the drawings. I know, Mr. Jones, you're got, you've gotten far on your drawings, but how much time?
I mean, I'll have plans done back to you next week. I would defer to Mr. Miller how long it's going to take him to put this letter together.
I, I, that's quick. I mean, that, that's going to be a quick letter. I mean, when I say a quick letter, it's pretty easy to put together. I just got to go through what, what the new service things are.
Okay, so you think two weeks is enough for submission?
Absolutely.
For me.
Okay, and for Mr. Jones as well, okay. So then I would like to amazingly make a motion to accept the application. And then, um, and we would put it on for a vote, um, based on the period that you're submitting for. Okay?
Okay, Madam Chair? Aye. Let's share Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shepeta?
Aye.
So this is closed.
Okay, so, um, and we'll let you know, um, as, as soon as we can about what that next hearing date will be, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, item number twenty-one, twenty-three oh eight B Z, eighty dash fourteen Chevy Chase Street, Queens. This is Richard and who else?
Oh, sorry, this is, this Chevy Chase, sorry.
How do I mute again?
Mr. Lobel?
Frank Noriega is also usually.
I don't see him. Oh, there he is, Frank.
I'm here. I believe Richard's here as well.
Okay, who else is with you, Mr. Noriega?
Uh, we have Mr. Levy and Eduardo Escobar on the line.
Okay, are they all ready?
Are you on?
Everyone's on?
Yes.
Okay, everybody raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions? Everyone say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Noriega. Let's go.
Um, thank you, Ms. T S. I'm going to start. Richard Lobel, Sheldon Lobel, Frank Noriega. Um, Chair Commissioners, we listened to the executive session and thus can respond with specificity to the board's comments. I think the board will be pleased that we have actually addressed some of the issues that were mentioned, uh, which have not yet been picked up on D O B's website. So Mr. Noriega can discuss some of that specifically with regards to the gas lines. Um, just again, for context, I would note that we are here for an amendment. Uh, the amendment seeks basically a waiver of one, uh, uh, section of the zoning resolution, which allows for a slight enlargement. Uh, in a, in an encroachment within a, within a front yard, uh, for a religious ark. And the other two, um, conditions are that or that. They're not, they don't involve waivers of the resolution. They are conditions relating to the layout in the cellar, inclusive of the walk-in refrigerator and on the side of the building. So, um, obviously we, we've heard the board's comments with regards to this. We, you know, we're interested in, in moving this along. But I do want to just, um, be able to address some of the more, uh, serious, uh, issues, particularly with the gas line. And the, and the spending that was done on the, on the E C B violation. So if, if Mr. Noriega can speak to those, I, I think that the board will understand those better. Sure, well, it's actually, it's, it's a tie together between the E C B violations and, um, um. What appears to be, uh, some miscommunications on what the, the filing fee that was sent across. Um, this, um, the E C Bs, we understand are still outstanding and need to be paid. But what has happened is we have filed for a legalization at D O B and that's that six thousand dollar fee. It's a penalty imposed by D O B for the filing, uh, of the legalization, which is to not only remove the gas lines. Uh, but to legalize the work for the, the, the water lines that are down, that were installed with the illegal kitchen that have, uh, are now being proposed as just sinks. Uh, so that's what that six thousand dollar fee, um, and that's associated with the job that can be found on D O B now. That job and the, that filing fee we sent was done on November twenty-third, I believe, and the permit was pulled on November twenty-fifth. Uh, but we're showing.
You're, you're muted yourself. We can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, our, we show that that permit is valid actually through August of twenty twenty-one. Um, so we're not sure who's, uh, saying that the permit has expired, but we, we do have an active permit. That being said, um, and perhaps Mr. Levy can touch on this later, the, the work has actually been done. We just need D O B sign off to show that it has been legalized.
Sorry, I'm looking at a work permit from the Department of Buildings. Issued eleven twenty-five twenty, expires January eighth, twenty twenty-one. Issued to Eugene Fisher V S P Mechanical. Removal of all installed water and waste lines for kitchen sink, installed gas line for stove grill in compliance with E C B violation, blah, blah, blah. D O B violation, blah, blah, blah.
So you may have an outdated permit. Uh, I'm looking at one that says eight eighteen to twenty twenty-one is the expiration date.
To one eight twenty-one. That was last week.
Eight eighteen twenty-one is the permit I'm looking at online available right now.
Okay, please send.
But that, that being.
I mean, don't forget, you didn't give us this information. We had to find it ourselves. So, uh, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to help you, um, which sort of isn't fair for you. Given.
We appreciate that, but to note that the, we are planning on submitting the final sign off as well. Uh, we're expecting that sooner than later. My understanding is that the work has already been done. So we're waiting for the DOB sign off as well.
So you're saying that the gas line is, is done, is removed?
Mr. Levy, do you want to comment on that? Is your understanding the gas line has been removed by the plumber? That is correct?
Yes, yes. You hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's done.
When was it removed?
Uh huh.
What was the day of the work was completed?
I don't have it, but it's about three weeks ago, three, four weeks ago. I don't remember exactly. Listen, I don't.
Four weeks ago? If it's four weeks ago, why would the submission say that, that work is still in coordination phase with the engineer to remove the gas line?
Oh, yeah. I don't understand this. I did. And I have an engineer who worked for this. I have a plumber who worked for this. I just told them what to do. I paid the bills that they asked me to do. They're the one, I don't understand anything, building department permits, all these things. I really don't have a clue how this work, you know?
I'm not talking about the permit department, that building department. I'm talking about the submission by the applicant. It says for the.
When I paid the six thousand, when we paid the $6,000, asked me to make $6,000 check to the violation to, to, to get the permit out. They was waiting for me to give them the $6,000, the, the ECB, the building department, so they can pull up the permits. That was holding the permit, the $6,000 that we're supposed to pay, the civil penalty, which I did. Once I paid it off, then they, they gave the granite, the permits to go ahead and remove the gas line. So that's why it took me time to collect the money, you know? It's tough on the synagogue to come with money today with this COVID thing, you understand?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I know. Can you, if, if the gas line is removed, can you send us tomorrow pictures showing that it is removed?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we got, and plus we got the inspection last week, uh, from the DOB. And it's passed, everything went through. They're waiting to show on the computer. We passed the inspection, everything is removed. Absolutely.
That's good.
Yes, yes.
It's good, but I do have to say this is incredibly frustrating and I'm now blaming your lawyers. Mr. Lobell and Mr. Noriega, you know how hard this application has been for us, the board, because of the lack of cooperation of either you or your client, right? So instead of, um, instead of sending us a memorandum of law about why we have no authority, why didn't you ask your client, what's the status on the removal of the gas lines? And give us an accurate description of that application of the materials? Because by end of November, there was a permit issued that predates your filing deadline for this hearing, which I believe was December 24th. And if the, if the gas lines had been removed three weeks ago, that co, that can, that, um, concurs with December 24th. And you, I mean, it's inexcusable. I, I don't even understand it. It's inexcusable. You send us down this. We, we, we have no idea. We figure it out on our own what's going on. It's not an excusable approach to an application by anyone. And especially an application where this board has been struggling with zero success in getting things done that, um, we've directed the owner to accomplish. No excuse for it. And I don't want to hear an apology because there's no excuse. Why do that? Never again.
Understood, Chair.
On to the next one.
Okay. Um, so we had discussed the, um, removal of the gas lines. We discussed the, the fee in order to legalize conditions at the site. You know, we, we come back to the, to the issue of the two conditions which we were, for which we were seeking. And, um, the memo that we submitted, we have no, you know, obviously we understand that the board can condition its resolutions. That's not the issue here. What the issue is, is has informed us that removal of, in particular, the refrigerator, the walk-in refrigerator here will be a financial hardship on the applicant. And that the good faith efforts they have taken, including renting an entire site devoted to, uh, to legal activity, to actually conducting, uh, you know, larger celebrations within two blocks of the site should demonstrate sufficient good faith that they're not going to use the cellar for anything other than what it's permissible for.
So here, here we go again. We've had this conversation many times before. Um, we're not going to have it anymore. And, um, if they were, if they had such financial hardship taking it out, they might've had financial hardship putting it in. And they knew they were doing that at their peril because the activity was illegal and they knew it. So I don't have sympathy and you can hear the rest of the board doesn't have sympathy. And we're not going down this road. So I would say, I still stand by my, my position. They have a choice. Either we accept and vote to approve an application to amend and legalize the illegal conditions that they have on the site, where we have told them that in order for us to be willing to accept what is currently illegal on the site, certain illegalities have to be removed and certain improvements have to be made. That's their choice, or we vote to deny the application to amend and legalize. And you need to return the project to the status quo, ARC included. Sorry, that's part of the status quo. And the, um, and let the Department of Buildings deal with it. Because we just give it back to them and you'll continue to get on a, on a however often basis violations, ECB fines, which will cost a lot more money. It's already, what, $65,000? It probably would cover the cost of removing, easily the cost of removing that walk-in refrigerator and doing it right. So I don't want to have any more discussions about the memo and all of that stuff and what the scope of our review is. We know what the scope of our review is. And unless there's something else, I want to ask the public if they would like to speak.
Well, Chair, actually, there's a follow-up question.
Let's hear a follow-up question.
The, the chair mentioned that there was, uh, that there was a method whereby the applicant could allow for above-ground plantings at the last hearing. And our only understanding was that concrete would have to be ripped up in order to do so. So if there is a method that, that was able to be accomplished, we would want to hear it.
So I'm sorry, but I talked about this at the last and I wish somebody had listened. All over New York City, we have pocket parks that are developed on top of garages. We have even a application, which one was that?
We understand that. We understand that.
My sentence? We even have an application for something where there's this, um, you, there's a proposal to landscape a roof. Oh, it's a parking garage, to landscape the parking garage. And what was given to us as, uh, an example of how that could be done was all of these beautiful landscaped rooftops and beautiful land and et cetera, et cetera. Those are landscaped with above-ground planting beds. And if somebody had actually talked to an architect, a landscape architect, they would have found out that this is as common as every day that.
Chair, we understand that. We understand that. The only thing, the only thing, because we did listen to the last session, the only thing was, was whether or not there was a comment that was made around the plantings, which required breaking up the concrete. Are, is there a way, understanding all that, is there a way that this can be accomplished without breaking up the concrete? That's it.
So there are two things that you're conflating. You break up the concrete to plant in ground. To build planting that on top of the roof of a cellar. You build on top of that and you build beds with a certain height using concrete. Yes, that's how it's done. Whether it's breaking it up or simply drilling into it to create anchors is a completely different thing.
Understood. Okay. That's, that's all we needed. That's all we needed to know.
But, but part of it is, is because nobody asked an architect, how do we do this? Instead, everyone just jumped to conclusions that they know and they don't know. Okay? So it's not an excuse. I don't want to hear it anymore. And then we also asked, you have all of this, all of these brick walls located on city property. We asked that you prove that you have the, the right to be there and you gave us nothing on it. So again, there isn't any excuse. We asked for that. We got nothing. As if we didn't ask for it and you're hoping it's going away. The property extends beyond what's allowed and you need to either get a revocable consent or you need to move those walls back onto the property. It's very, it's extremely simple.
Understood, Chair.
Okay.
Our architect, our architect has already started making efforts to achieve, to receive a revocable consent, from what I understand.
Well, how do we know that? Because you told us in the submission?
No, no, he's here. He's here.
No, but you made a submission. The submission made no mention of it. It's inexcusable, your submission. Inexcusable. Okay, so, um, all right. So what I would like to do is go to the public. This application is 2308 BZ, 80-14 Chevy Chase Street in Queens. Zoom webinar ID number is 978-669-33388. Telephone number is 646-558-8656, with the passcode is 423431. And if you're already in, um, raise your hand, please, if you're already in Zoom. Star nine. Right. Okay. So I'm going to give the public a chance to dial in in case there is any. So far, I, I don't see anybody who's not associated with an application. Um, but I am going to make a motion to close. And I'm going to give the applicant, um, some time, based on when we figure this out, to actually do more than submit a drawing that shows how they intend to do it, to actually do the work. Because we're not, as I think Commissioner Sheta said, um, so far as we can see, all of this is about delay tactics and we're not interested anymore.
Yeah, Chair, I would just comment on that for the record. You know, this is a synagogue which has been not, has not been operational for COVID and has lost members of the synagogue to COVID. So, uh, I would ask that the board, uh, have some leniency on the fact that not only is membership affected by that, but fundraising as well. And I know that, that the, uh, executive director here would attest to that.
Right. Okay. Fundraising and all of that notwithstanding, being refusing to comply with the board's directions, COVID, all of that is not acceptable.
I, I think we've, I, I think we've been, sorry, Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I, I think we've been, uh, quite lenient on this, on this case, particularly on this case. Uh, and, and we've, we've certainly, we've repeated the same thing multiple times, counsel. Um, so while I understand you're doing your job, I appreciate that. Um, I, I think the record would reflect the reality here.
Yeah, that was from day one, by the way, when, when we, like, agreed to look at this application, we were very crystal clear and you agreed to removal of that refrigerated, uh, walk-in refrigerator. You said, yes, we will do it. And, and now it's like, it's like we're coming back, no, we can do it. It's a hardship. And typically the board asks for this to be installed. Yes, we do. But like I said during the executive session, we do when this does not encourage an illegal use.
Yeah, we're, we're not being purposely obstructive. We're basically working with, uh, you know, a religious nonprofit, so we're doing the best that we can.
Right. Well, hard to tell. Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a few months, um, after we close, which we're going to do today, to install and, and remove, et cetera, according to all of those things. And to the extent that there's a revocable consent being pursued to show where you are in the revocable consent process. And it better not be that you filed an application the day before we vote. Because that's not believable. The application had to have been filed tomorrow or already. Otherwise, it's a misrepresentation to this board that anyone is looking into a revocable consent because they're not, other than maybe looking up what a revocable consent is. So.
Chair, I, I would, the art, just understanding, I mean, this is a serious accusation. So the architect is here, if you wish the architect to discuss their efforts.
You, you're the one who brought it up. It's never been brought up in any papers.
It's just, it's just, there, there's been an accusation levied of, of misrepresentation. I just wanted to correct the record.
Okay. I, I don't need to correct the record. I've heard really, it's been, we've asked and we've asked and we've asked and we've gotten nothing. So I want to see something and it can't be something that is applied for the week before we vote.
We understand.
Say, why we did not, can I say something?
Yes.
Why we got nothing? I purchased a restaurant. I, 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 we spent, we spent so much money.
I, I don't.
We did. No, but we did. We're working with it. You cannot say we didn't do nothing, you know? You cannot say we didn't do nothing. We did. I, I closed the gas line. I took the permit. I purchased a restaurant to remove all the kitchens over there. I removed all the, very little parties lately because of the COVID. I, we, you know, we're doing everything. The, the synagogue functioning only 20% from what it used to be, you understand? So please, you cannot say we didn't do nothing. We did something. We're doing, you know?
Yes.
I understand you're giving in lenience. I appreciate it, but you cannot say we didn't do nothing. I know, I personally doing it.
Okay, I'm not saying you did nothing. I'm saying you didn't do the things we directed you to do to the.
I'm trying.
We directed you to do is the point. And we've been directing you to do it for a year. So the years.
I have a trustee that I'm trying to convince also. You have to understand, I'm in the middle, you know? I'm, it's not easy and you know what I mean? When you put 10 Jews in one room, you know, you have like a hundred different opinion. It's difficult.
Okay, so here's. Here's an easy direction to the trustee. We are going to vote on this. And when we vote on it, because the board is frustrated and not seeing what it expects to see, it's likely we will vote against it. And then you will be at, at the mercy of the DOB and their enforcement unit for, for the foreseeable future, who knows what? So you tell your trustees that unless you do these things, we are likely to vote against this application. And that should light the fire under them to just say, go do. Okay? No more discussion. So I'd like to close the application. Motion to close? Motion to close? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners.
Thank you. Item number 222509 BZ, 277 Canal Street, Manhattan.
Hi, good evening. Neil Weisbart.
Hi.
Hi, I'm the only one attending.
Okay.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm, raise your right hand? Oh, I don't, it's, sorry. Do you affirm to tell the truth? Get tired. To the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Thank you, State Attorney. For the record, proceed.
Good evening, Madam Chair Commissioners. Neil Weisbart on behalf of UFC Soho Gym. Um, going quickly, I know everyone's, it's late. I extended reduced session. It sounds like we're almost there. The, regarding the sheet A2 that has the wrong floor, we will fix that plan to show the correct second floor plan. We'll bubble that. And we will have a list of changes on that and any other changes that we're about to speak to. Uh, the banners seem to be the other issue. We have not obtained approval from Landmarks Preservation Commission on the banners yet. We will remove them from the plans and seek approval without the banners. And if we do obtain approval, we'll come back to the board for a letter of substantial compliance. I think we, I showed photographs of the poles because I thought the board had asked us to remove the poles from the wall, but they predated the designation. So that's why I just put that in our submission.
Oh, okay.
I believe that were the only issues.
Okay, so then to clarify, maybe we didn't understand that. The reason you submitted the designation report was because, um, you wanted to show that the poles themselves were already allowed. But it's not, and you had gotten approval yet on the banners.
Correct. So we're going to remove that from our approval from the BSA. And if LPC approves, we'll come back to you by letter.
Okay, by letter.
Yes.
Actually, I don't know if this is okay, but, um, our council should, can note if it's all okay in the resolution, uh, about our agreement that, um, a letter of substantial compliance would be considered for, um, the banners in the future. Since it's, right? Is that something we could do?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that way, in future, if you came back two years from now and it's, the board doesn't remember or whatever, um, then at least it's not a big discussion about how come you came back with a letter.
Thank you for that idea. It's a great idea.
Um, okay, great. All right. It, I don't think there's anything else then, right? Um, so let's go to the public. Yeah, um, sorry. This is 2509 BZ, 277 Canal Street, Manhattan. Okay, how much time do you need to make this teeny, teeny change?
I would say a week or whatever the minimum time you want to give.
Okay.
Madam Chair, um, maybe we can close this?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, 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 I'm typing at the same time, that's why you're not hearing from me, okay. Oh, Commissioner Shonda?
Yeah.
Was the, did you mention, no, I'm confused. The, was the banner notation on the sign analysis?
Oh, duh, 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 yes, yes.
We'll submit a robust sign analysis that seeks what we're actually seeking, it would be without the banners.
Okay, good. So make sure that there's no mention of the banners anymore in your application, okay? And then your cover letter to be clear that that's what you're changing when you submit these things.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right then, so I'm, I'm taking a note, two weeks to submit. Hopefully, I can accommodate that in our schedule. And yes, indeed, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Perlmutter? Aye. Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheva? Commissioner Sheva, oh, thank you. Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay. Application's closed.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. New case, item number 235-98BZ, 1861 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn. Okay. Hey, Mr. Blaufu is, Blaufu is. Yeah, he's in. I don't know if anyone else is speaking on this, but Mr. Blaufu, you can hear us. Please state your name.
Hello?
Yes.
You hear me?
Yes, oh, you're one of, I'm going to mute your Zoom. You're, you're speaking on your phone also, right? Yeah. Okay, there you go. Go ahead.
You hear me now?
Yes. Let me swear you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Please state yes or no? Hello, do you hear me? Yeah. Hello? We had him on the phone and now we don't have him on the phone. Oh, there you are. Can you hear, can speak? Because we, we can't hear you and I think. Can you hear you? Call in. So call us. Hello? He can't, he can't hear us, I don't think. So he needs to call in the number. Can you display on our screen what the call-in number is? You'll give him. Yeah, but he's on his phone. No, I know, so maybe. I think, I see him typing something, so I think he's getting, trying it again.
Hello?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, great. Mr. Blaufu, you hear me? On, I don't know if you should hang up your phone. Can you hear us? Mr. Blaufu, can you hear us? He, he needs to be both on his phone and on the phone.
I think he's trying to dial in.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Together? It's still down.
No, we can hear. We can hear him typing, but he can't hear us. Maybe, can somebody who has Easy Share Screen?
Hello?
There you go, can you hear us?
Hello?
He cannot hear us. Can somebody who has Share Screen write on their screen? Please dial the phone number on our screen. Just write on the word, please dial in with your phone. This number. Oh, it's, okay, that's good. But you need to make a typeface so we can see. Can you make that red? Or something, because it's very light? Kurt? Too light, he can't see.
My mouse is being weird, sorry.
Um, Naz, Nazar, since you're the other really adept screen share person, can you just type on your, on screen share? Please dial this number on your phone? And let me.
What is the number?
Hold on a second. Somebody tell him the number? Uh, 646-558. Oh, sorry, it's the wrong one. Sorry.
646-5 what?
I'm telling you, just a second. Mr. Blaufu, can you hear us now? Can you hear us? I don't understand.
Hello?
Can you hear us now?
This one? Oh, here we go.
Mr. Blaufu? Can you hear? The only other thing I can think of, Kurt, is for you to call and invite.
Hello?
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 Oh, okay.
Hello?
I don't understand why we're having so much trouble. He's called in, this is a phone call we're seeing. I don't see his number.
I mean, we can hear him, it's possible that his computer just doesn't have its volume on.
Oh, so maybe on the Share Screen, right, turn up your volume. Or actually, I could write this on a little display. Oh, he can't see us anymore. Because now he's just called in, he's not on Zoom.
Hello?
Can you hear us now, Mr. Blaufu?
I hear you, do you hear me?
Yes!
See, miracles, miracles do happen.
They do, see? All right.
Sorry about that.
Okay, it's all right, welcome. Tony Matias needs to swear you in on this hearing. So do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed, Mr. Blaufu.
Well, I, I got a 10-year grant 10 years ago and nothing has changed. And there was a certificate of occupancy. And I, I listened to the private session, the executive session, and I frankly did not understand some of the concerns.
Okay, let, we'll go over them, okay. Are you the owner or you represent the owner?
I represent the owner.
Okay. So, um, in the prior approvals, there were statements, so the prior, the prior resolution, right? We, that's what we rely on. We go to the prior resolution and we see what did the board previously consider on the application? What were their concerns? And we want to see how the application today responded to those concerns or response today to those concerns, to the extent that it's something that might change, right? So one of the things that the resolution said was the hours of operation at the site. We need to know what those are today. It also said that the, there needs to be perimeter fencing around the property that's eight feet high. We need to know whether there's perimeter fencing that's eight feet high. There also was a requirement that there be a 10-foot planted area at the lot line that is shared with residences. We always do that to separate the residences from commercial use. And we did see the drawings show that there is a 10-foot planted area. And that's not like the area where plants are, that are available for sale sit. It's a permanent planted area to protect the residents from commercial use. So we need to see the drawings with indications of the fence being eight feet, 10-foot planted area. And also that the signage that's there complies with zoning requirements of a C1. We didn't see any drawings that show the signage or compliance with the zoning requirements. Also, and this one is a trickier one. In 2009, the board directed the property owner to remove from 1873 McDonald Avenue basically what was operating there, which was a commercial use, an, an extension of this nursery on that site. It seems evident that that was not done. And so it, that's not, that's not a permitted use on that site. So either they have to arguably apply for a variance or something like that to legalize it or get a zoning change to legalize it, or the use has to be removed. And also, we noted that the, it seems like the business, the subject business, is extending past the property line, like it's selling everything on the sidewalk and into the street that's not permitted. It has to move inside its property lines. So these were the things we observed. It's not just, you know, rubber stamping what was and what is and so on. We need to know that you're actually in compliance with the terms of the prior grant. And then Commissioner Shonda noted that the location of the site is incorrectly shown on the zoning map. So that site needs to be corrected. The zoning map needs to be corrected and show the site properly. And the, so, and the general comment was that the compliance chart was a little confusing, but independent of the compliance chart, we'd like you to answer these specific questions that we went through in the review session, that I just went through again.
May I respond?
Sure.
In regard to the fence not being shown, my drawing 5A clearly shows an eight-foot-high existing fence. And in regard to comments about signage, my drawing 5 and 5A clearly show signs with their dimensions. And the, the BSA sign analysis supported that.
So you're saying you did provide a sign analysis?
Yeah, absolutely.
That shows compliance with the C1 district regulations?
Yes. My signage totals 69 square feet. Compliance would be 150 square feet.
Okay, so I'm just going to go and other Commissioners.
I saw that.
Yeah, I, I.
I have that.
Yes, okay.
Now, I have another question. In regard to the 10-foot landscaping, my client is in the landscaping business.
Yes.
If landscaping would be a 10-foot strip planted with grass.
No.
If, if plants were placed on top of that grass, would not that enhance the separation?
So the planting, so now I'm on your drawings. The planting can't be grass, that's the point. The purpose of the, of the planting area is to function as a buffer between this use and the neighboring residential properties. So, and that's why we wanted to see photographs of what the planting situation looks like. So. I see. So. So that's why.
I don't believe I have a photograph of the back.
Yes, no, you don't.
We don't have any photographs of inside the site, which is what we wanted. So when you say that, when the drawing shows an eight-foot fence, this drawing is the same drawing as the one that was the last time. What we're trying to do is confirm in real life that all of this exists, right?
Well, I was there.
Okay.
I saw what was there 10 years ago was still there.
Okay, but we don't know that, so you need to give us photographs.
Oh, yes, certainly.
Okay, so the photographs confirm either statements made here or in your statement of facts or in the, on the drawings, right? Because often we get drawings that don't have anything to do with reality. It's unfortunately a theme. So we want to make sure that the photographs and the drawings look the same.
Fine, I, I will take care of that. I, I do not understand about the, was it the radius diagram did not clearly show the proper lot?
I think it's a question that I had raised. So when I looked at the zoning map, the, the zoning map that was submitted as part of the required submission package, in that the site, that there is an arrow indicating the location of the site, it is, it's the wrong block. It should be the block between, it's the one block down. Because the site is not in an M1 zone, it's in an R5.
So I put the circle and, and the arrow in the wrong block?
That's all, yeah, you just have to move it down one block, that's it. Otherwise, it looks like it's in an M-zone, which it is not.
Well, I, I want you to understand, Commissioner, that I do have erasers in my office.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's the block, yeah. I, I can't read the text very well, but it's the one block down.
Yeah.
So now, what would you like me to resubmit? Photograph showing the rear?
Right, so.
And a corrected zoning map?
So you need to send us photo, submit photographs more than just the rear. We're not, we, we always talk about perimeter photographs, right? So you, you walk around with the camera, your client does, walk around the perimeter of the site facing the outs, facing the perimeter, and you take photographs so we can see the condition of the fencing and we can see the conditions of the perimeter of the site. Then you turn around and you have your back to the fence and you do the same walk-around of the entire site so we can see what the condition of the building is, et cetera. And, and then a plan where those photographs are key to the plan so we can see exactly where each photograph is taken. Otherwise, we have to guess and it's very hard, okay?
I, I plead guilty, but I, I felt by using a firm like Urban Cartographics, they would know where to take photographs.
So they only took photographs from the street? They didn't take photographs inside the site, as far as I remember?
You are absolutely correct.
Right, so, so we start off with photographs from the street. And usually, your, the project manager will ask for photographs from inside the site. I'm sorry that you weren't asked for that in the notice of comments, that should have been asked for. That's a way for us to check on the condition of the site after 10 years. Because sometimes we'll ask for the site to be spruced up. Sometimes, you know, things get kind of neglected and we take this opportunity to spruce the site up. Happily, your client is a landscaper, so most of the time we're asking for landscape. So, and we know how to do this. So we also need to get photographs to see whether that 10-foot area in the back has been landscaped as directed in the prior resolution with shrubbery to function as a buffer between this use and the neighboring use. And if it isn't, it needs to be done. It needs to be shown on the drawings and it actually needs to be installed. And your client probably knows the right kinds of shrubs to plant that grow to some reasonable height, like six feet, to function as a buffer, because as you can see, there's residences right behind this. to function as a buffer. Because as you can see, there's residences right behind this building. And interestingly, there's a really nice set of hedges as a really great model between the, the properties to the side and, and the residential properties behind that. So you already have a model for what a nice planted buffer looks like.
So that the buffer has to have height instead of just a, at the ground level?
Yes. So it needs to be a planted buffer, not just grass. The purpose of the 10 feet is to give room for the landscaping to actually grow and grow high. And you can look at, and it's actually great. There's some really nice hedges that are going on at the back of the other sites adjacent. And I can't tell whether there is permanent landscaping like that on this site or whether that's just stored everywhere for sale. And I'm doing this from satellite imagery.
Madam Chair? It is January and quite cold.
Yes, we know.
Not being a landscaper by trade, but I would guess that it's not appropriate to plant shrubbery at this time of year.
Correct. So we're going to give you time until the beautiful March-April planting season happens. And then have you come back with those improvements made, okay?
Very good.
Okay. And the only other one, which is quite tricky, you need to give us information about 1873 McDonald Avenue. I don't know who, if it's the same property owner. I don't think so.
I checked. It's the same family name, but it's not the same person. It's, it's a relative.
Okay, so we have a problem with an illegal use on another site. That site's not in our control, but it's our responsibility to report this. So that's not good. So, yeah, it's not, it's not a permitted use. And I'm very sympathetic to to the need for expansion of their business onto this other lot, but it's really not allowed. So anything else, Commissioners, you want to add?
Just, Madam Chair, did we ask him for the prior approved plans?
Oh, yes.
Remind him about that. And then also a compliance chart? I didn't remember hearing you say that.
Compliance chart, we already have, but I wanted him to respond very specifically to the questions.
And the lumen analysis?
Lumen analysis. Also, yeah, so in terms of lighting, I don't know if there's lighting on the back, on the sides and back of this building that might be shining into the residences to the rear. If there are, is, the lighting needs to be directed away from the residence. So I guess the easiest thing to do is on the drawings that you resubmit, show us where the lighting is. And then from there, we can decide whether we need a lumen spread diagram. Because if there's only kind of one light mounted to the back of the building, the building's very far away from the rear of the property line. So I don't see any reason for a lumen diagram then. But with respect to, what was the other question you asked? First question, Tony?
The BSA approved plans and the
So the BSA approved plans, we, you didn't submit with your application the, the approved plans that we're supposed to be relying on to determine whether there's been any change since the last approval.
I don't quite understand. In other words, the plans I submitted, give me a moment, indicate existing and proposed.
No, but, no, so what we rely on is what's existing? We rely on a stamped set that came from the BSA. So you must have had that stamped set that came from the BSA, as opposed to pulling this out of your own file because you were the applicant before.
I think I do.
Okay, so we need the BSA approved stamped plans, okay?
Okay.
Needed to us. And if you don't have them, then you need to request them from our archivist, who, who will send them to you.
Might I resubmit the graphic stuff before the planting season?
Sure. And it's another way we could do it. We could, you submit the graphics. We have an earlier hearing. And then we agree on everything and we learn about everything. And then you proceed into planting season. We can do that.
Okay.
How much time would you need to submit the, the graphic information and the, the compliance information?
Will do.
How, how much time do you need to do that?
Three weeks.
Three weeks, okay. Okay, so let's go to the public.
The current application being discussed is 5-98BZ, 1861 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn. If you wish to call in, it is 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 978-669-3388. Passcode is 4323431. And if you're already in Zoom land, then raise your hand, Zoom hand, star nine.
Right. Okay, I have everyone's. Let's see, we have only Mr. Blaufo already in. Okay. All right then. So you understand everything? So if, if there's anything you don't understand about this, or you need a little, you know, reminder. Your project manager is Daryl Ruffin. And so please reach out to him. You have his contact information?
I do. And right tomorrow, right after my vaccine injection, I will contact Mr. Ruffin.
Okay, bravo.
My, my age allowed for it.
Wow, you're the first person I've met who qualified not as being a doctor or a firefighter.
Well, I, I hope that you all get to get that shot as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Blaufo.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You too. This concludes the public hearing for January 11, 2021. We'll see everybody tomorrow.
Okay, thank you everyone.
Good night.
Night.